I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Councilmember Little is not here at this moment, but he is en route and will be here shortly. Councilmember Sander is absent at this time, but is also planning to arrive. Councilmember Budge.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Mayor Pulapati.
Here. I'm going to ask the city clerk to announce the meeting's video recording and playback schedule.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, April 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Tuesday, April 15th at 1:00 p.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can also be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14 and on the City of Rancho Cordova's website.
I'm going to call on Don from the Sons of American Revolution Sacramento Chapter to please lead the pledge. And then I invite the audience to remain standing for the invocation which will be led by Deacon Walt Little from St. John Vianney's Catholic Church.
Please follow after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us bow our heads and pray for God's blessing. May the light of God surround us. May the love of God enfold us. May the power of God's love protect us. And may the presence of God watch over us. And especially when we practice random acts of kindness and senseless beauty, may the fullness of God's glory flow through us. Amen.
We're going to move on to presentations. City clerk, do we have any public comment for presentation 5.1?
We do have a public comment for presentation 5.1. Do you want to take the public comment first?
Would the speaker wait until after, or would you like?
Absolutely.
After? Okay. So, going to have Councilmember Budge present the proclamation to the Sons of the American Revolution Sacramento Chapter.
I get to do this because I'm the only one here, unless somebody runs to raise their hand, who can recite the Midnight Ride of Paul Revere. On the 18th of April in 75, this is a proclamation that we are very pleased to present. The National League of Cities has asked us to commemorate this, and we're happy to do that. We want to give it to the Sons of the American Revolution. My mother was DAR Sacramento Chapter. And whereas on April 19th, 1775, it marks the date of the Battles of Lexington and Concord, which began the American Revolutionary War and the path to American independence. And whereas the events of the day are immortalized as the moment that the shot heard round the world, a defining symbol of liberty and self-determination. And whereas the National League of Cities, you all remember that David was president of the National League of Cities last year, that's why we're doing this. The National League of Cities recognizes the 250th anniversary, just as he arrives.
Is that Speaker the devil?
Sorry, David. I apologize for Siri and me. Whereas the National League of Cities is gearing up to celebrate the semi-quincentennial?
That's a good one.
We got to get that to roll off our tongue, right?
Semi-quincentennial, birthday of the US with an abundance of observances and events. And whereas the National League of Cities encourages all cities to commemorate the Battles of Lexington and Concord, to honor the brave sacrifice and enduring legacy of those who fought for freedom and created the land of the free and the home of the brave. And whereas the Sons of the American Revolution Sacramento Chapter are direct descendants of patriots who achieved independence for the 13 original American colonies and seek to maintain freedom, patriotism, and respect for our national symbols. And whereas the Sons of the American Revolution serve to educate current and future generations about the significance of the historical battles and the values of democracy, civic engagement, and collective action by volunteering to support veterans and assistatures with living history interpreters, lesson planning materials, and reenactment events. So therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova does join the National League of Cities in recognizing the 250th anniversary of the Battles of Lexington and Concord and commends the Sons of the American Revolution for preserving the memory of the American Revolution. And Siri has assigned this as our mayor. And I am very happy to present it to you. And I would be happy to have you tell us who it is that you are a descendant of.
Oh, okay. So.
So we're going to take a picture.
Okay. Nick, come on in.
Okay.
So I'll use this mic?
No, I stand in the middle.
You want me to face?
That one.
Okay. Yeah. So my ancestors are both Edmund Littlefield. One was the father, one was the son. They were descendants, by the way, of Edmund Littlefield, who came to America in 1637, went up to New Hampshire, signed the Comp Act of New Hampshire, and then went on to Wells Main and settled and had several generations. So Edmund Littlefield and his son, by time of the revolution, were living down in the area of Braintree, Massachusetts. And both are said to have been at, probably as militiamen, at the Battle of Lexington and Concord and later at Bunker Hill. So that's my story. I'm sticking to it.
You should all talk about the Sons of the SAR.
Sure. So the SAR, on the 100th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence in 1876, some city leaders, not government leaders, but city leaders in San Francisco, of all places, decided they'd ought to honor their ancestors and formed an organization called the Sons of Revolutionary Sires. They did that. They participated in the 100th Year Parade honoring the signing on July 4th of 1876. That's when the parade was, not the signing. And then word got out through print paper back east that they'd done this. And so all of the colonies that should have done this themselves started jumping on board. And within a couple of years, we were chartered by the United States government as the National Society Sons of the American Revolution. So there you've got it. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, will you have the public comment, please?
Yes, Larry Ladd, you wanted to speak on this item. You'll have up to three minutes.
All right, Larry, let's hear you recite.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. They didn't teach us that by that time. I too am a daughter-son of, not a member of the organization, but I'm a daughter of the American Revolution lineage, fellow by name of Amos Mather, old guy guarded prisoners at Yorktown till they went elsewhere. And more characteristic of yours truly, this Quaker lineage, and my ancestor at that time didn't want, it was when Benedict Arnold was invading Richmond, and he didn't want them rampaging around, so he was cutting down the bridge that Simcoe, who became a big shot in Canada, was coming up. But they were in green uniforms. They cheated. And so my ancestor was looking for red uniforms. This is American loyalists. They came up, surrounded the working party, and Simcoe went and chit-chatted with the leader and then said, surprise, you're all under arrest, because my ancestor was looking for a red uniform. So, yeah, these things happen. And as a consequence, my ancestor got kicked out of the Quaker church. So there we go. But I want to thank you guys for here. History is important. It tells us where we are today. And Madam Mayor, all the complexities of history, once you dive into it, about power struggle between France, he admits he's wearing a hand-me-down uniform from Paris that was out of his style. So one of my favorite heroes from the revolution are Pierre Coran Beaumarche, who while George Rogers Clark was battling Indians, was sneaking gunpowder up to Pittsburgh from New Orleans, as you may remember from New Orleans. And my favorite image was at the Battle of Brandywine when Lafayette, junior officer, first off the boat, and they've issued all these French muskets, and nobody knows how to put the bayonet on. So he's going, no, 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 let me show you. And that, right before the British attack. So that's real war, confusion, but it brought us where we are today. Thanks.
Don, I think you need to sign him up.
Thank you. Well, next up, we have a really important topic. It's Councilmember Linda Budge's birthday week. Well, we're going to sing.
Persephone assured me we weren't going to do this.
Nice job.
Yeah.
Persephone is the first one that told us all about it. She lied so much. Nice job, Persephone. You ready?
I'd like to request anybody from the audience, if you want to come up to the mic, you know, because we have Garrett. Anybody wants to drown our Garrett, please, you're welcome.
This is going to be fire. I got all sorts of notes to hit today.
Here we go.
One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Thirty-second birthday. Happy birthday to you. Yay!
Thank you all.
Any public comment, Larry?
They have good cookies.
We're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. I'm going to ask the city clerk to announce public comment.
Yes, we'll start with Larry Ladd. Following Larry will be Bonnie Penrose. You'll have up to three minutes.
Madam Mayor, in a previous meeting, you saw a hat like this with the old Rancho Cordova hat. I got an interesting historical hat, too. And the point of it, it's old, just like me. It's torn, stained, sweat from my brow up there, just like me. And I'm here to, when you're in the Navy, the happiest time any time in the Navy is when your relief comes to relieve you on watch. And so I've been badgering you guys for 20 years about childhood cancer, and my days doing that are done because in this community, we have somebody who cures what I was worried about. Her name's Erin Brown, and if anything comes up, I just refer people to her now. So no more me. I'm so old that I was shadowing Joe Biden's campaign for president when he was 44 years old. And when I've come to present to you, I've been like President Trump drawing arrows about where a hurricane is going to go. It's been that level of scientific analysis. Now the real science is here, so I don't have to do that anymore. And I can focus on simpler, less distressing topics than childhood cancer like homelessness or the Middle East.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bonnie Penrose. You'll also have up to three minutes.
Thank you. So I'm Bonnie Penrose. I've lived here for 52 years, and I want to talk about the mascot. And first, I want to say, I've been here for when Rancho was booming for Mather and Aerojet. I've been here when Rancho had a bad reputation, and then I've been here for cityhood. And you guys have done an amazing job. The landscaping on Folsom Boulevard, those Welcome to Rancho signs, that one's on Sunrise, one's on Folsom, that Folsom one is amazing. I've been here for all of that, all the good work. The signs that tell you where Hagan Park is and where's City Hall. So lots of nice things. And so I think we're getting a good reputation, the new neighborhoods, new Rancho. But mascot, it's, I think, silly. Of course, it's a waste of money. It makes us look like we're sliding backwards. Rancho would not seem like a distinguished community with that. There's a reason other communities don't have a mascot. We don't need anyone to march on the parade, and I don't know what other things the mascot was going to do. And even though Korea, I guess, has those and likes those, we're a different sort of community here. So I hate the idea of spending money on it. I hate the idea of there being something, and I would say the same thing about the money if it was just $5,000. I think we'd be made fun of if Rancho Cordova is actually spending a million dollars plus minus on something like this. And I know there's been stuff in that article in the Bee about the rocket. And I realize there would be, it's not going to be a rocket, there would be voting on it, there would be other options. But for the rocket, I just want us all to close our eyes and imagine a rocket. What does that look like? I think that we would probably be harassed about that. I think kids would have great fun making fun of our rocket. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for all the hard work you do, and please, 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 don't have a mascot.
Good to see you in person, Bonnie. I see you online a lot, but yeah.
In addition to the two public commenters, we also had three individuals email public comment. Those came from Larry Ladd, Brenda Guston, and Mark Berry. Those have been distributed to the city council, placed in a binder in the back of the council chambers, and they have been posted on the city's website.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to council reports, and we can start with Councilmember Little.
Hey, I just got here. Friday, I went to the, the builders have that nonprofit out in Rosemont, and they were doing, every few weeks, they have a new academy and a graduation for people they're putting into construction careers. It's a good liftoff to enter directly, to try and seek an apprenticeship with the union. And five out of 16 graduated this time, I think. That's not unnatural. There's a lot of drop-off. They don't pay anything, and it's like a nine-week course. But the five people who did graduate, the looks on their face and their body language told me that the program was a success, and that's a great success rate, almost 33% anyways. So that was a good thing. Nothing else, really. Been a kind of an uneventful two weeks.
Councilmember Sander?
Yes. Madam Mayor, two weeks ago, I attended the Project Play Summit. I think it's on. Yeah? Project Play Summit, and it was held down in Berkeley. This is a project of the Aspen Institute. Aspen Institute's sort of a nationwide, to improve the world, sort of foundation. They do dozens, if not hundreds, of different projects, very well-known. But they have one that's been going on for 12 years, maybe a little longer, 15 years, that's all about play. And it's about play sort of in the context of kids and communities. And so it fits right in with the efforts we've been making with RCA. Except they have sort of boiled this down to a science and a program that is applicable in communities. So for example, if you ask a question like, how do you get kids in a lower socioeconomic high school more engaged in athletics or extracurricular activities? They have put those studies together and have ideas for you, like eight different models you can pursue. If you're interested in boosting youth sports, I'm not talking about travel sports or elite, anything labeled elite, but like everybody gets to play kind of sports, they have a complete eight-year marketing plan, parent outreach, coach training, kid recruitment, facility management system that you can, that you can just use, that they've produced. And they've got great speakers at this meeting. It was really interesting from a number of points of view. Some of it was nuts and bolts. Some of it was talking about how some states are organizing youth sports the way they've organized high school sports, like trying to figure out what the rules are and how to manage it. Not sure that's a good idea, but that was a point for debate. There were also some scary sessions put on by, let's tell them, the elite sports providers who are talking about although their market for youth sports is massive, they are actually interested in getting into the broad-based youth sports market, read Little League or girl softball or youth soccer, because there's more money there that they haven't yet tapped in their existing kind of high-end market. So that's a little scary because it sort of threatens the idea of youth participation if they're getting in after revenue as opposed to after what we would try to do. Most youth sports organizations are not trying to make revenue, they're trying to get participation and experience for kids. So there's sort of a friction there. But it was a great meeting. I went with Jason from, from the Cordova Community Council and Ian from our city staff. Ian attends our RCA meetings. So sort of the three of us ganged up and broke out and saw all the sessions and talked a lot about those issues. So probably expect to see something coming back from us to this body about how we can best organize around some of the principles we saw expressed there. So that was Project Play from the Aspen Institute. I'm not sure where their meeting is next year, but it's probably worth sending, if not the three of us again, a different three, to experience that because it's pretty enlightening. I also had meetings last week, such as a SECAG meeting, talking about transportation priorities in the region and how to divide very precious few transit dollars specifically. There was a bit of a debate about whether there's some leftover money that comes from the state program, but a lot of the transit agencies are running out of their pandemic funds. And they've been, Linda can probably tell us better than anyone at this point, but they are running out of that sort of boost they got, burning through it, basically. Ridership generally has not come up. Things still have to be replaced, they age out, ongoing costs exist. So the question is, how do we feather off of the last state funds that are available? And the solution we came up with actually leaned a little bit towards capital expenditure versus operations. But that was an interesting debate, and it preludes probably some sort of a, I'd say a crisis for most of the region's transit agencies. I'm not sure exactly how RT plays into that. I think RT's going to end up looking for their own quarter cent sales tax support or something like that. But it was obvious just from numbers presented that there is a looming crisis there. And I think with that, I will say those are my, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Budge?
So none of us have talked about the airshow. We have not met since the airshow. It was absolutely spectacular. We need to congratulate the team, their team, and everybody who attended, everybody who participated. It just, it knocked everybody's socks off, literally. I mean, they did, they did a great job, and everything was perfect. There was nothing that went wrong. You know, we always knock on wood to make sure that we have a successful airshow, and we are one of the top 10 airshows in the entire United States. And it's because of the partnership between the city and the county and, and the community council and everybody who participates, because it just reaches out and grabs everybody. And, and we also thank our residents, who had a really great time, and we're just happy to be there and, and have a little air liveliness going on. Siri and I participated independently, but in a podcast in honor of Women's History Month, which was a lot of fun. And if you know how to find podcasts, you can go listen to us. That's not one of my skills, but I'm better with the 18th of April. Friday morning, last Friday, I think, the Metro Fire broke ground on the, on a new project out at their training center up at the top of Zimfandel before you go into Sacramento County. And that's been through a lot of iteration. It's been 20 years that they've been trying to get that going. And so finally, they are able to build a building for training, specifically for training and for, and I think, Mike, I think it's also classroom space and maybe some dormitory space, although I'm not sure about that.
I don't know about dormitory. I don't think so. I'm looking at the Metro Fire folks, and no, no dormitories, but classroom space, definitely.
Okay, classroom and training. And, and we really congratulate them on that, because it truly has been a long time in coming. And David and I had a fascinating meeting this morning with Golden State Water, full of, full of statistics, the fact that Golden State actually has more water available today than it did 10 years ago, simply because people are changing their habits. And of course, that's one thing the state of California is trying to do by eliminating all of our green grass and all those things that make neighborhoods beautiful, from my perspective. But they have 2,400 fire hydrants that they have to maintain, and they do that on a regular schedule. They also have some in the parkway, which is probably our most vulnerable area for wildfire. Here in Rancho Cordova, we're very urban and we're not subject to wildfires the way they have been in other parts of the state. And, but one thing that people might like to know is that we have a, they have a customer service program, customer assistance program for low-income customers. And people who are having trouble paying their water bills should definitely contact Golden State Water and see how to get some relief with their water bills, because the way, one, actions that the state of California has taken recently that I don't think David and I could explain, because it's very technical, have meant that they charge less for the amount of water that you use, but they charge more for the flat rate that allows them to recover their capital expenditures. So it's a very perverse kind of a relationship. But in the meantime, while you use less water, your water bill probably went up. Mine did. And so if you, if you need that, you can ask for their customer assistance program. And that would be my report.
Councilmember Budge, you also attended the press opening with Congressman Bera on the mail theft.
Oh, yes, you're right. Thank you. We need to thank our congressman, because he is finally, after almost, at least 25 years, trying to bring some attention to the concept of mail theft with our group boxes. And all of our, for at least 25 years, all of our neighborhoods have been mandated by the post office to have these group mailboxes. And frankly, if somebody had wanted to invent a way to facilitate mail theft and identity theft, they couldn't have thought of a better vehicle for doing that. They're extremely easy to break into. And not only that, but with an audit that he commissioned, it turns out that these master keys that our post people carry around with them are not, number one, they're not being signed out correctly, number two, they're not being turned in correctly. And so they surveyed Rancho Cordova, Sacramento, and North Natomas, and there's a huge number of these master keys that are simply going unaccounted for. So nobody knows where they are, that the, the individual post offices can't account for them, and they could be used to break into your, to your mailbox. Actually, today, there's a report on Nextdoor that the mailbox at Tintavina and Davina has been broken into, and it's not that they used a key, they just used a crowbar. not that they used a key. They just used a crowbar to pry it open. So apparently, there is a better generation of these things, but it has to do with getting the post office to install them for all of us.
And I also heard that they were selling the master key on eBay on Craigslist.
Oh, that's probably not a surprise.
Yeah, so. Vice Mayor?
All right. So I'll break this into a couple of things since we have a small meeting today. I was really disappointed to hear that the school district actually put in the paper and was deciding that it's no longer going to allow our kids from Rancho Cordova to go to the Folsom schools, since we were promised for years and years, years that always we, there was a way up to if you wanted to take your kids up there. But now they're getting ready to slam the door shut on Cordova ever taking its kids up into the Folsom area, which I knew for a long time, which is why we're now doing the study and moving forward with Rancho Cordova starting its own school district. It is an idea of fun. It's just we've now outgrown this relationship. And apparently, they realize that too, as they lock the door and say that our kids are staying in Rancho and we aren't coming up to Folsom, except for I've heard athletes somehow make it up there. It's crazy. It's magic. Had a coffee with Micah. Awesome. Capitol Airshow was amazing. I got to speak at that and hype everything up. I think it's a, it's a crazy benefit to having an ex-council member's wife, and Darcy, and that is Angela Terry, and Darcy, and having them be there and be with the city, but yet taking that next step is just awesome and watching our airshow grow. And we sold out two days, which equals somewhere around almost 80,000 people, I think. That is crazy. We had 100,000 people. And that, that's why we say Rancho Cordova is poised so much to have like a professional sports team or something like that in it because we moved in 100,000 people. And if you didn't have jets cranking over at awesome speeds, you wouldn't know that 100,000 people came in our city and left our city, honestly. Like it was, it was really big, but it's just, that's an amazing opportunity. Went to a CAF, CEF banquet, which is people that are trying to bake schools better. Helped up spice kebab and that's tasty. Went, so I met with the Sacramento County and, and that is an interesting group of individuals. And so we, one of the things we've always wanted to do is we've always wanted our airport back. It's our airport. It's Rancho Cordova's airport. Mayfair's always been our airport. And we want control of that. And it's going to take a huge lift. And I know when we were first becoming a city, I read all the documents and talked to everyone. The only reason we didn't is because they said we couldn't put together our own airport authority. Airport authority is the one that basically controls the airport and lets you go through it. So I think as a city that we've grown it, grown into the, a place that's totally capable of running our own airport for ourselves. I think we've now hit that level that we should get back the airport. We're big enough, we're strong enough, we know direction. We've outgrown it. We're 21, we know how to drink now. We're, we're at that place where we're a total stable city. It's the same results of why I think we need our own school district. We've outgrown the situation. But I was told that they're not interested and they have some other plans. So I said, Rancho doesn't take that as an answer. We want our airport back. We want to do what's best for that airport. And we know we can take it into the next generation. There's $4.3 million of construction out there, over 25 to 4,500 jobs that could be created in that airport for my citizens. And eventually Rancho Cordova will take control of that airport and we will take it into the next century. But it'll be a strong fight. It'll be like after getting to the school district and, and after we're done with our park district, then we're going to go get our airport. So, you know, when you're about 20 years in council, we're going to get that thing and it's going to be great. And they're working on, they have a lot of concerns about how they're dealing with the homelessness right now because we're not seeing, we're investing so much money and we're not seeing the return. So we are going to be meeting with a couple of people to help run that for the county, decide on which direction that's going to go. Rancho Cordova really cares. We're one of the few cities where homelessness goes down because as a city we work on it. Thank you to, I think we're talking about the day, but our homeless outreach team and all the, the time they spend actually going out there and engaging people is huge to us. And we are trying to make it safer. We realize that, that homelessness isn't just like someone else's problem. It's our problem because those are our citizens that have gone down that path. And so we need to do stuff to take care of them, but the money goes to the county. And so we want to, we want them to give us our money back so we can go take care of our citizens that are falling on hard times or that are mentally or physically unable to take that step. So they're figuring out how that's going to work. Hopefully, Micah will stay engaged with us and Joe. Like, we really need to get ourselves in front of that because that is, they are thinking about, we talked to Rich Desmond, and he does know that they're going to tilt that back up, the homeless kind of group of all the, the cities. And they're thinking about setting up almost like a, almost like a JPA for homelessness, but they don't want to call it a JPA to help other cities talk about what we can do with the homeless dollars, which I actually think is an excellent idea. I think we need to bring more direction as a council and as a group on it. Because I was like, when I went to them, I was like, what do you need for us to be successful? And like, how can we help this problem? And they don't really have an answer of how to help anymore. It's not even like we want more money. It's we don't know what to do next. And so I think if we got all the best heads together, I think we could come up with some direction and just get behind our, our politicians and figure out how we can really help them to achieve. And lastly, and I just want to say thank you to Rick Warren, the CEO of the Black Legacy Fund. So this is, this will, next time will be the last time I'm mayor of Rancho before I'm off council. And it's interesting to have someone come up to me and be like, hey, talk about all the legacy of stuff you did. And I feel like it's just yesterday, and I'm just as nervous as that first time I got up here, when you guys, when you guys voted for me and, and someone said, well, I'm tired, so I guess we'll pick Garrett. And then I chose, and then I came up here. And to go back through all the stuff that's changed in the last six years or almost eight years, it's crazy to think of what Rancho looked like before we came in here. And now the construction's going and the Amazon plants and the new, and the new facilities and the new people and the direction we're going and picking up like literally one of the largest companies in, in the world now, Solidigm, and have them poke their heads here is crazy. Like Folsom Boulevard even looks completely different. Like it's this amazing looking facility. And when if you go back that time, you're like, oh, we were just starting. We were getting in arguments about how we were going to, the median was blocking paths. So we were worried about the restaurants that were going in. And to think all that's now done and we're taking that next step. And so I got to brag on Rancho, which is literally my favorite thing to do because I think my citizens are the best in the region. And I think we are going to, I think we're going to be that premier city that's so innovative in thinking. We're willing to try and fail. And that's what this Measure H, Measure R grants are about. But I think also we keep our citizens safe. We have enough cops. We, we help fire out. We are taking those steps to really make the core of Rancho Cordova safe. And as we figure out more with schools, I, it's interesting, I, I just got approached with people that want to help facilitate making sure our soccer squads have all the coaches. We had to turn around like 400 kids last year because we maxed out. And now people want to come in and help us with that. I mean, it's, it's, I see nothing but bright, bright future for us as long as we keep on the path and, and we keep always our most important thing, which is keeping ourselves in the black. Like that, there's nothing, as long as we keep that kind of wealth and growth happening and we always keep an eye on that and keep our business district strong, I don't see a bad future for us. So that's it. Thank you. Oh, it, it's weird. The name of the award is the Black Legacy, Black Man Legacy Award at Home.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor.
I didn't know it was at home. I was, that was the only part that doesn't make sense to me. But I still appreciate it. Thank you.
So my update, actually, I've attended a lot of events with other council members of the Vice Mayor. Councilmember Budge and I attended the Metro Fire's Zinfandel First Responder Training Facility Groundbreaking with Councilmember Sander. I was through the first pitch for the girls softball league 60th anniversary celebrations.
Did you, did you miss?
I threw the pitch.
Did you miss it like last time? Did you at least get over the plate?
Well, I threw it and.
That mean?
Which means, which means Councilmember Sander almost caught it and he was not supposed to be anywhere near where he's, you know, the pitcher was.
So he almost caught it. So it's like last time, could you at least practice one time?
Look, I played 20 years ago. Can you give me time? Okay, Councilmember Little, how much time do we have to practice? Anything? But I can still run base to base pretty fast. They didn't let me try that. The airshow, as was covered, spectacular performance in the air. This one brings a lot of revenue to the greater Sacramento region. The last account we had was about $7 million to the greater Sacramento area. And so, you know, they're shopping in our stores, staying at our hotels. We got to see how much revenue the airshow bought this time. So it's not just magic in the air. It's magic for our small business owners. It's wonderful for the kids to see a career in STEM because they see all these pilots doing amazing things. So it's a win-win situation all around. I gave a proclamation at the Arbor Tree Planting on March 22. They actually planted trees along the Bear Hollow Bike Trail. It was a beautiful day. So no, making city more green will be the tree city, moving, keep, keep being the tree city. The month of Ramadan just ended, so I attended a couple of Eid celebration, one being from the Bangladeshi community on Sunday. And I think there's another one on Saturday. Councilmember Little, you might be going to that one next Saturday? Fair point. And I also attended a transportation meeting. From good food. You should attend, Councilmember Little. And I also attended the transportation meeting from cap to cap. We have cap to back, cap to cap, capital to capital coming up in a month. And so there are a lot of meetings, setup meetings going on in that regard. I was in the transportation group and we talked about how we elevate our region's needs to the federal decision makers and how we present it to the federal decision makers. And that's my report and I'll pass it on to City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I was checking off all of the items on my list that you guys all covered, so I only have two left. One was attending the IAMC, which is Industrial Asset Management Council and doing a panel. This is really an economic development groups or economic development team was there, but I had the pleasure of sitting on a panel with our friends from Solidigm and SMUD who talked about their location into Rancho Cordova. So this is basically an international conference that was happening in Sacramento. And we had the pleasure of joining with Solidigm and SMUD and presenting the great decision that Solidigm made in locating to Rancho Cordova, at least from our perspective. So, so we had a great presentation and talked about what happened as part of that experience and to the other real estate, corporate real estate professionals in the room, giving that example of what kind of work that we can do here locally to support business expansion. And then the only other item on my list is tomorrow, there's a fundraiser for the Rancho Cordova Leadership Program at the Children's Museum for their seat wall project. And so that is happening tomorrow evening. And so if you're interested in going and doing a part of the fundraiser for the Rancho Cordova Leadership Program tomorrow at the Children's Museum, I think you can go on the Rancho Cordova Chambers website and, and look at the event details.
Starts at 4:30.
Starts at 4:30.
Thank you. We now move on to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Do we have any public comment on this one?
We do not have any public comment.
Are there any items council wishes to pull from consent calendar?
Hearing none. I'll move approval of items 9.1 through 9.7.
Second.
Please call roll.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Aye.
Mayor Pulapati?
Yes. Consent public hearing items and they are none. I'll move on to public hearing items and they are none. Any public comments on 10, agenda item 10 or 11, City Clerk?
No.
No. We will move on to regular calendar items and I'll ask the City Clerk to please announce the subject.
Fiscal year 2025 through 26, Community Enhancement and Investment Fund Grant Applications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Randy K. Stevens and I am your, one of your analysts working on the Community Enhancement Investment Fund. And with our team is also analyst Lindsay Samples and our college intern Sophia Easton. And we are proud to share with you the applications that have come through in our current grant opportunity for fiscal year 25, 26. We will have a presentation loading up momentarily. In your council packet, you have the staff report as well as a copy of our presentation. And we have a packet that demonstrates the total number of applications that have been submitted before the deadline. I'll go ahead and just start sharing a little bit of background for, thank you. Thank you, Clerk team. This is our first meeting for which we'll be sharing the applications. And based on what was submitted by staff, it is just the, the list of applications, including the requested amount by those applicants. It does not include any current staff recommendations. We will be coming back to with that information later this month during a special workshop. So no decisions are needed tonight. And I just wanted to share that in the future, staff from our finance team will also be presenting on the Greater Measure H and Measure R programs. And this presentation is solely about our community grant process. Okay, so for fiscal year 25, 26, we had a couple of, or a few changes, excuse me, to the program. And that, I'll just go ahead and review what those included. We removed economic development related proposals from the Community Enhancement Investment Fund process. And that is because our economic development team will be running its own grant proposal program during fiscal, fiscal year 25, 26. And that will align directly with the strategic plan. We are also working with city staff on updating the micro grant program based on feedback we received from you to include a micro grant program funding for up to $10,000 in our next fiscal year. And that will help refer some of our community events and activities. The other thing that we are doing is working with our partners at Rancho Cordova Athletic Association to kind of prioritize the needs of kind of the So we'll be working with the partners at RCA. Lastly, I just wanted to also share that we do have our community grant categories. And those categories are arts, culture, history and entertainment, youth programs and services, which includes education. And then we have our community assistance programs or what used to be called OTHER. This year, we're also adding two elements into kind of our priorities. And that's ongoing community programs. So we're doing a pilot project there. And then we're also doing an IDEA incubator fund. So you'll be receiving more information from staff when we come back on April 29 about the total number of applications and how they fit into these types of categories. All right, now let's get into some of the details. You have a giant packet of 1,700 pages in front of you that shows all of the application materials that were submitted, including our stakeholder, you know, feedback on those applications.
To make a point to the audience, we do not have any physical papers in front of us. No 1,700 papers are printed out. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, yes. Thank you for saving the trees. All of this information.
1,700 trees were not killed.
All of this information is available on the City Clerk's, on the council meeting webpage. All right. So during our open call, which was from February 10 through March 14, your CIF, your CEIF staff supported our applicants with in-person sessions that we held here at City Hall on Wednesdays and Saturdays. And we had many people come to visit us and ask us questions about how to apply and how to get started. And we hosted more than 25 virtual appointments. And we were on Zooms, making sure people feel prepared and ready to apply and hit that submit button. In the end, we had 89 successful, successful applications received by the deadline. And when we total up those asks from these applicants, it's nearly $5 million in requested funding. The total amount available for community grants is projected to be $3.125 million. And staff plans to come back. And staff plans to come back to you on April 29 with a recommendation of approximately $1.2 million. And that's because we have approximately $1.9 million already committed through multi-year grants and other programs. So you'll see the, the balance of those numbers when we come back on April 29. And I'll just share one more slide. And that is our grant process and the timeline. So we will be here where your only item for April 29 will be sharing the staff recommendations. And then if we need to, we'll come back on May 19 for the regular meeting. And then we are hopeful to come back on June 2 with the adoption of a resolution that would outline the community grant program. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment for this item.
Council, do you have comments, questions?
There's a lot on here that I don't think people know about the new stuff that we're supposed to be filtering by, that we talked about, that they put the grants in, but we're not dealing with those grants through the CEIF that we talked about at our visioning. Let's make sure we go through that pretty meticulously. And if we said we're not doing that anymore through this grant, or it goes into this bucket going forward, let's make sure we really take the time to actually put those in the stuff or say, hey, this isn't something we're going to fund through, through this, through Measure H and Measure R grant.
Okay, so clarify, you'd like to see more additional clarification for the grantees or the applicants?
It's what I don't think, I think maybe in the future we can do a little bit more. But just when you're looking at stuff, because I see the whole grants and, like, a quarter of the grants don't look like they would be, be able to use them anymore because they're the old style way and we're not doing that anymore. And I think they, you can't tell them not to push through the grants yet. But let's, let's take the time to really filter those out so we can go through it a lot quicker. Because I think a third of them are stuff that we don't fund through Measure H grants anymore. And, and also, um, we're going to have a long talk about the school district ones when they come up on this body, just FYI.
Thank you.
There are some applications on the list that surprised me a little. I won't point in any in specificity. I will say though, that we sort of have this perennial issue of businesses looking to expand their revenue through a grant from us. That's generally not what these are intended for. The idea is to leverage something, like a nonprofit that's providing something and we're matching, or using volunteer hours to do something and we're extending, or we're building something for use of a nonprofit, or a government partner, something like that. But generally, if a business is applying to extend their services to a group of people for free, that's just us buying their product on behalf of some people. That's not what these are generally intended for. So I don't know if we communicate that to them or what our application materials look like with regard to that. But I see a few notable applications that are sort of on that line. How can I get revenue for my business from this grant?
That's what I was talking about, David.
So, but then they still met your guidelines that they are in the packet?
If they applied by the deadline, they were included in the total packet.
We don't, we don't filter anyone out yet on the requirements. They'll get filtered now and like, hey, these, you're just expanding your business. So we're going to put that over here and we're not going to fund these.
Yeah, I will say probably from the staff team's review of the different applications, when we come back for consideration, they're going to be aligned with the council's direction and philosophy for those recommendations. And so I would expect that if there are those items, they're probably unlikely to be recommended for, for funding. So I think that's the lens by which the team is reviewing it. So when they come back, you'll hopefully see a good alignment in the direction that was received from council from the implementation of the recommendations.
I think it's in the title, Community Enhancement, Not-for-Profit.
Yes, so we will be back with recommendations that align with the criteria on April 29.
Thank you. If no other comments, I think we can go on. Go ahead.
Just one quick comment. I totally echo what David said. But just reading through the list of whatever it was, 89, and a lot of them have a significant amount of overlap. And I think there's really good advice when you want to do something, you want to help people, someone's already in that space. So I would kind of like to see a lot of coordination from all these people. Half of them were education. It's like, damn, how much education is there out there? I would like to see more coordination from the applicants. Because like I said, when you want to get in the nonprofit space, there's usually already someone doing that work. So that's my only comment.
Thank you. When we meet with the individual applicants during the kind of workshops or Zooms, we encourage them to connect with other stakeholders in that space and how they could build support for their program or partner up to kind of meet different goals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy K. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 12.2, and I'm going to ask the City Clerk to announce a subject.
Homeless Outreach Team Update and Discussion.
Going to ask Russ and Chief Tamayo for the staff report.
Well, good evening, Mayor Poolpotty and Councilmembers. Russ Ducharme, Neighborhood Services Manager, here with Police Chief Matt Tamayo to provide you all with a homeless outreach team update. We have several of our partners here in the audience that are here for, to answer your questions and for further discussion later. They'll also be coming up to the podium and speaking throughout the presentation. So real quick, our meeting goals here are just to provide an update to the current status of homelessness, give you an update on the team in general, provide an insight on the day in the life of the team. Also look at our future and current affordable housing projects. And then obviously some discussion and questions towards the end of the presentation. So just a broad lens look at homelessness in the state or in the region. But in the state, homelessness has decreased. We were, I mean, has increased, I'm sorry. We were at 150, 150,000 two years ago. We're at 180,000 now. But in general, in the county, things have subsided a little bit. We can see that it has decreased from, from 9,200 to 6,600. The number who have been Sacramento County residents for six or more months has decreased. And then thankfully, our veterans, the veteran population has decreased as well. At the bottom, we can see our pit count. It's kind of had a jump there in 2019, pre-COVID. But since COVID, it's slowly gone down, 156 in 2022, and then 52 here in 2024. So just to look at our, our team in general, we have two RCPD officers dedicated to the team. We have two cleanup contractors that are out assisting the hot team. We have two city navigators. CityNet is our navigating outreach provider. We have two navigators and then one code enforcement officer. We also have our internal partners with Public Works, Housing, Economic Development, the City Attorney's Office and Communications. And we can't do this with our external partners. There's a lot of space to cover out there in different venues. Heart is, is one of our stronger partners, obviously doing the winter shelter. The Community Food Bank also helping us do outreach. SAC Metro Fire, the Park Rangers, our District Attorney. We have our Community Prosecutor that help us often. The school districts assist as well. So in general, since 2018, our philosophy has always been service first. And we've always strived to have a self-help program. We bring the navigators out into the field with, on our ride-alongs to meet with our, you know, homeless residents and, and provide wraparound services.
And then, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council and public. The accountability piece is really on the Police Department side. And so these are some of the core tenants. We hold everybody accountable for their actions. But we also encourage and educate as well, which are part of the three E's of enforcement, or three E's of our homeless strategy, excuse me. Consistency, we're out there currently four days a week, but our patrol teams are also out there. So really, it's a seven-day-a-week program. Educating businesses and private owners, and we'll talk a little bit more about specifically what we're doing for businesses recently. Our Community Prosecutor started a new business watch, and she'll be able to talk about that. She's one of our guests tonight. And then, of course, quickly responding to calls for service or anything else related to homelessness and what we do as far as enforcement, whether it be citations, it might be a ride somewhere, it might be connecting that person to services. Each interaction is unique and we don't specifically use enforcement every single time if there's another way to do it.
So our pathway to service and services that are provided by the navigator and the team in general, transportation. We are providing basic necessities, partnering with the food hub, getting documentation, getting people document-ready for housing and to gain services, additional housing opportunities, our core program, which the DA is going to speak to here in a little bit. Mental health services, we also have our shopping cart retrieval program and general cleanup in the city. Just some services that the team has been providing to the community. Basic community complaints that come into Neighborhood Services are a little bit different than what our partners at the Police Department are getting. Pounds of debris removed from the city streets and then number of carts retrieved over the past four years.
Quick question, Russ?
Yes.
150 that are unhoused and 3,000 carts?
150 that are unhoused and 3,000 carts.
Okay.
There's no, there's, there's really no direct correlation there.
That's fine. Is, is it unhoused and carts, or is there other people using carts?
There could be other people using carts. Our job is to, to get them off the street so they don't become a problem. They're all not necessarily tied to a homeless person.
Okay.
I understand Siri's concern. Whenever you're anywhere around Target, Walmart, Safeway, there's no question that people may walk across the parking lot and just leave it over there and somebody comes along and takes it. And the weird thing is, Safeway right this minute has, in their remodeling, have decided to eliminate two of their cart corrals. And so there's some sections of the parking lot you can park at at Safeway, and there's no place to put your cart. So you leave it there and oh, it walks off, you know? So I understand that, but you just see them all over.
Yeah, I think Siri, you had the same issue I did, which is this doesn't correlate with the number of homeless. Right? It's like pretty radically different. But I don't know, just speaking personally, if I trust that number for a number of homeless. There was a change in the survey company that was used this past year. And everyone said, I think at the time, oh no, same, we did it the same way, so we should have the same result. But it was sort of a shocking result. I mean, if you look at just the change in our numbers, I guess you guys might be in the best position to say whether or not, you know, you think our numbers actually went down that much or not.
You know, David, you know, you know what I was told, and, and somebody else may have heard this also. It was raining the day they surveyed Rancho Cordova. And people were inside and/or, or wherever they could find shelter. And so there, there was no easy access to provide an, an accurate count.
Yes, if you comment on that, that might be good. If you have any other insights into why these numbers have grown so big.
So, go ahead. I'll jump in with two points. One, the carts. So I, I think it's partially related to the homeless population, but I think it's also related to people who aren't transportation dependent, so they're walking. So they use the cart to take their groceries home and then they leave it. People take it a little further than the edge of the parking lot. Kids or somebody else picks it up and uses it. But we know from our enforcement that the homeless population will take a cart, it'll be repossessed, and they'll just go take another cart. So one person might be responsible for 150, 200 carts. We don't track those stats, so this is anecdotal. I don't know for sure, but that's my suspicion. And then as far as the point in time count goes, you're absolutely right. If it was raining, if it's excessively hot, it really does depend on the number of volunteers out counting. Depends on the time of day, and it depends on where they could be other than somewhere visible. So for instance, Rancho Cordova, we're very close to the parkway. And if someone's in the parkway during the count, it's not going to be a Rancho Cordova statistic. But it doesn't mean that they don't come to Rancho Cordova because we know that our homeless population doesn't stop at the city or start at the county line. So it's one of those things, I think it's really hard to get a super accurate number. I will say, in my experience and working with the county partners, maybe those numbers aren't exact, but I think they're representative of the overall problem at the time in 2024. There were much more homeless people outside of Rancho Cordova than they were inside. And I think that is due to our robust approach to homelessness and the partnerships. We've already talked about some, we'll continue to talk about it. But we really do have a lot of partners. We have a dedicated community prosecutor. We have the CityNet navigators. We have probation, parole that assists us, of course, Neighborhood Services. And it goes on and on, and you saw the other partnerships that we have. So, and this is something that we've been doing in Rancho for five, six, seven years. And we've seen some of our neighboring jurisdictions now adopt this program because it has been successful here. So I think you're right, it wasn't 54, but if you look at it more as a ratio, I think it would make more sense.
Are we keeping track when we pick up this shit ton of carts, where they're coming from? Because it's pretty easy to tell generally, based on a cart, what store it came from. And so I'm wondering, like a lot of the things we do in our homeless response, taxpayers subsidizing private businesses. When I went to college in Washington State, the Safeway that all the college kids shopped at at Gonzaga, if you took that shopping cart off the premises of the parking lot, it shut down. The wheels locked up, don't know the technology, it was affordable back then when I was in college. So I'm wondering, these businesses fail to upgrade, take reasonable measures to meet the problem occurring to them. Are we just paying for them for, to profit? So that's a concern for me, that this is outrageous, that many shopping carts. And it's, how does that make sense for them?
Joe, our Safeway does that. And the curious thing, if anybody shopped at Safeway lately, you probably had the issue of actually getting the cart out the store, out the door to your car. Because at first they were, they put a new mechanism in it. And at first, they were so sensitive that they would get to the door and stop, which was really very frustrating.
So, if I may, we have a shopping cart retrieval program here in the city. Our team at Neighborhood Services does the work on that shopping cart retrieval program. Every company that has shopping carts has to provide the responsible party to go pick up their carts, okay? The challenge here is that these retrieval companies will not pick up carts with any debris in it. Zero. So what happens is, in what we learned early on, 2018, 2019, is we're chasing this cart around the city, right? And it's this, it's the vehicle for the issue. So at that point in time, we made the decision to proactively grab these carts. There is room to improve. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here and say that we can't get better, we can...
You guys are doing a great job. You guys are lightning fast. I'm just, I'm, I'm worried if the businesses are creating that need for you guys to be lightning fast. I don't want you to have to be lightning fast, sort of thing.
I, I hear you. But we do have room to improve. We can, we can upgrade our shopping cart ordinance. So there is some place to, to improve. But I think ultimately, getting it off the street is a priority for us.
Yeah, I mean, I would say there is, you know, policy choices on how aggressive to get with your, your stores. And there's been a balanced approach, I think, over the years that we've tried to have with the different businesses. But there's definitely, I think, opportunities to have a policy discussion around how aggressive enforcement of those, of enforcing their cart removal programs.
So just a broad look at the, the funding that we're putting towards cleanup services. It's about $540,000. We're using a private contractor to do this debris and cart removal. We also partner with the Sheriff's Work Release Project and the Probation Work Crew. These are kind of on-call. We're primarily using one contractor to, to do our shopping cart and debris removal.
And then looking at, these are Rancho Cordova Police Department-specific numbers. But just sort of breaking, breaking it down in a one-year period of what are homelessness slash transient calls for service. Sometimes they come in as transient or homeless, depending on how the call takers put them in. But this is any call throughout the last year that had... But this is any call throughout the last year that had a homelessness component to it, and this is just sort of how it's spread out through the week. So you can see it's pretty consistent Monday through Friday and then it drops off a little bit on the weekend.
So I have a question. So if you call 911 to report a homeless person at risk to themselves and your 911 call goes to the highway patrol, if it's in, do they report that back to Rancho Cordova?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. They, they'll transfer it from their communication center to ours.
Okay.
As with any endeavor, we like to self-examine and look at where there's improvement. And so these recent enhancements are about the last six months of changes that we've made internally at the police department and amongst our partners to make a better product. How do we get better? And so our community prosecutor started a business watch in the Folsom, Olson-Simphidel Business Corridor, and she'll come up a little bit later and talk about that. Was well attended. We hosted it at the police department and we had maybe 15 or 16 different businesses represented at that first meeting. And we're going to be doing that quarterly and we're also expanding it to other portions of the city. So it's been well received. The care court, this was something that went online in December of last year, 2024. There's been a couple iterations. We're still looking for a person that would qualify to get adminced to care court and then ultimately housing. The, I guess the qualifications to get into care court are pretty narrow and so we haven't had anybody yet that we've enrolled from Rancho Cordova. We've temporarily signed a third hot officer to the team because we saw the need. And so we had somebody that we were able to temporarily displace from their current assignment and add them to the team, and that's been a major help. The resource card for patrol, this is something that seems obvious that we should have done a long time ago, but when we do self-reflection, we discover these things. What we did is we use the hot officers or hot supervisor to come up with a resource card that we could give to our patrol teams that they could refer to. So as laws change, as approaches change, we can update these cards and this effectively makes our patrol officers an extension of our hot team. And this is something that we're excited to get going. Citizens Academy, we host a citizens academy twice a year and in that academy we do public education. We talk about homelessness in the city. It's always a topic of conversation and this isn't just, the public education piece isn't just in the citizens academy. This is any type of a home, a community outreach that we're doing, whether it's Good Neighbor Day, Coffee with a Cop. This is something that I think you guys are aware, the citizens of Rancho Cordova have a lot of interest in the homelessness issue. And so we're constantly educating, providing resources and, and sharing information to hopefully not only create new relationships within the community, but learn what people and the places that people are reporting. Regional homelessness meeting, this is quarterly. This includes a lot of partners here, some of them, but there's a host of law enforcement partners there, CHP, Sacramento County, Citrus Heights, Folsom, all the law enforcement partners are there and everybody's pretty much doing the same thing now, which is nice. So talking about the JPA for homelessness, we're in the law enforcement world, we're sort of doing that already. There is some variation in city ordinances related to camping and homelessness, but most of them are, are pretty, pretty close to being the same at this point. Panhandling operation, this was something new we did at the beginning of the year. We obviously saw a need for it. We do homelessness operations, but this one was specifically focused on panhandling. We got our motor team to be involved because of their motorcycles are able to get up on islands, get to places that cars can't get more safely and quickly. We also used our real-time information center to help out. We have quite a few transportation cameras that we could see in real time and then direct our resources to, so we weren't driving in circles, be a little bit more efficient. And then most recently tonight was our ordinance amendment. And the reason for that was looking at our regional partners. Our ordinance wasn't as robust as theirs and so we brought ours up to equal the region. So I'm going to go into a typical day in the homeless outreach team and this just isn't the police department, this is all of our partners, this is code enforcement, our city net navigators, BioOne, our community prosecutor, and this is sort of the big picture of everything that we're doing. I will focus specifically on the police department's involvement, but we'll hear from some of the other partners here coming up. And then to talk about a typical hot officer's day, I'm going to bring up one of our hot officers, Officer Blair, to the podium and he'll go through this slide and talk to you about what he does on an average day.
Good evening, everybody. So this is just going to be a glimpse of the typical day. And the important thing is at 6:30, and the reason for that time is to be effective and safe. So 6:30, getting into the areas that are typically your more visible or chronic offending areas. Now, when I say like visible, I'm talking about like freeway access points for ingress and egress, for people leaving the city, going to work or coming into the city for work, as well as surrounding hotels or shopping centers. So trying to make sure that all of that is as much as we can cleaned up for business to start. So that's the focus first thing in the morning at 6:30. So within that, we talked about, and you heard from Chief there, the three Es. Education, making sure that we're reaching out to the homeless. Every person we contact, we're providing them with services. Where can you go? Who can you call? How do you get from the street to somewhere safe? Second to that is then the encouragement. If our second engagement with this person wasn't, is happening because they were not utilizing the resources previously offered, how do we encourage them to please make the right decisions and utilize those resources that we're paying for, whether it's through taxes or city-state funding, whatever it may be. But utilizing those services that are available. And then the third part of that is the enforcement. We have to have rules, we have laws, we have to enforce if it gets to that point. We do everything we can to educate, educate and encourage first thing, and then if we can't get to that point, then it is the enforcement job that we have to do. You know, Vice Mayor, you, you mentioned something, sir. You talked about, you know, that, that this is our community, so we treat it that way and we treat everybody as part of that community. And the expectation is that we're not passing the buck, we're handling the problem here within our community. So we do take it very, you know, we, we really take pride in, in the education, the encouragement when we're working with our partners, with our navigators and the resources that we have, whether that is through like the Heart Foundation and utilizing, whether that's the winter sanctuaries or wherever it may be. If we can provide a resource to get somebody off the street, we're going to do everything we can before we get to that enforcement part. Next thing is following up with our weekend's activities. So while we're gone, and you kind of heard, our typical week is that Monday through Thursday. As we're going through the weekend, we do have, whether it's through our community members that are reaching out to us via email, our, our partners reaching out with some issues that, that came across their desk, or even our partners, the deputies and the officers that have come across issues as they've either had calls for service or that they've been proactive on, we are also following up on. So anything that's happened Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and you could see on that last slide that Chief had, had addressed, there is a spike in Friday's activity and then going into the weekend. So we come back to quite a bit that we need to follow up on and address. So that's, that's the first thing that we're doing after we address the, the original 6:30 visual things that we need to handle and take care of for the city. Then you can see, address next is the proactive patrol part. So we will go to the areas that we know that we have chronic issues or those people that we know that typically don't follow our options and the offers that we do and we provide those opportunities to try to readdress, hey, what can we do to help you? So we go back and readdress those situations or the chronic areas that we do have a buildup of trash and those, they sometimes they become like, almost like a highway for transient activity, which then become littering and, and, and unfortunately, I saw for those that want to use the access ways of biking, running, jogging, whatever it may be. And so we, we do our best to make sure that the pathways and all, all of those public resources are clean and available for use. And then, so after that, we go to the proactive enforcement. So the loitering, the panhandling, trespassing, where we have those chronic offenders or where we have those, for example, I had somebody today, it's the third time that I've, the third time in 45 days that I've, I've contacted an individual in the same exact spot, panhandling. Some just don't want to change, make the adjustment. Every time I contact them, I provide them with, we go back to first base, here are some resources, what can I do to help you out? It doesn't matter if that's the third time I've contacted him and handed him those resources. I want to make sure that this person has, if they dropped it, left it, I don't care what it may be, I'm going to start back square one, here we go, how can we help you? So it doesn't matter whether it's the third time I'm writing a citation or if it's that first time, depending on the offense, I make sure that we still address that person with an opportunity first and then move our way down the path. And then contacting subjects who are not committing crimes. You know, it's important that we know who's moving through, through the city. There's a lot of people that have been coming through and that utilized light rail or that have been brought in from other states, neighboring states. And so we try to take, take track of those that are loitering around businesses that we should be contacting. We make sure to be as proactive as we can when there are situations of, like I said, loitering, panhandling or some sort of trespassing. And then near the end of the day, we're going back to those spots that we started almost at the beginning of the day. So you've got your, you're on your way out the door going to work and then you've got your people coming back or going shopping at the end of their day. And so we make sure to revisit those chronic areas and address the panhandling, those visible, for lack of a better term, I swear, like the things that you see that you just want to be able to go shop, you just want to be able to do what you want to do without having somebody asking for something. It's not that they need something, I get it. And we're also there, trust me, we've provided the resources and given them the opportunities. And I can tell you, behind me, the navigators do an incredible job of making sure that we are doing that. So it's, it's going back and addressing what we can do to minimize that stuff at the end of the day so that we start our day cleaning up the city, we try to end our day cleaning up the city and that way we can go home and then start all over the next day. You can see there, for every contact, we are distributing information. We have little handouts that we hand out to everybody that we contact, the navigator forums. Most, not all, but most of the homeless do have phones. Those that don't, we give them, there is a walk-up location for that, where they can meet the navigator, so we make sure that they know where to go. And then once again, as it relates to, depending on the climate or time of year, where there are resources and places to go, whether it's like the heart utilizing the, like the most recent, the winter sanctuary, or when it gets hot and there are those weeks that we have places to go to help them, just directing people on where, where to find some safe place to go, where the safe places to go during the time of climates or that time of year. And then as, as Chief mentioned, we also spend, and we do this almost monthly, we are actively out there working on homeless operations and we do a collaborative effort with probation, with our BioOne gathering the trash so we can, every time we make a stop, we're cleaning it up as we move along. Our other divisions and our partners within the county, but it's a full collaborative effort that we address monthly on targeting and working through the area that we could try, so we could try to make it better every day, once a month, everything that we do, we just, we, you know, we take pride as, as it's part of our service.
So I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
In the past, we've been told that most of our homeless have some connection to Rancho Cordova, but it sounds like what you're talking about with people coming from other places or other states, that might not be accurate anymore?
So we, we have the luxury of having light rail and sometimes that's, that, that could be a wonderful thing because it gives people the accessibility of getting around, but at the same time, sometimes it brings people from neighboring areas in here that may not be actual residents or from Rancho Cordova. Regardless of where they're from, we still treat them as they're our own and we try to provide the resources, right? But, but yeah, it's, most that we do contact are from the area.
Okay.
That's an interesting, I don't mean to interject, but that's a very interesting question, Linda, I've asked her year after year. And, you know, just being out there on ride-alongs and sort of seeing the interactions and having worked in like an emergency room environment, people under stress are likely to say, particularly when they see the badge, when they're asked, where are you from? They'll say, right here, because it's the safest answer. Like I'm where I'm supposed to be, I'm right here. And so I've had, I've done ride-alongs before where officers would say, oh, did you go to high school here? Oh, yeah. What's the high school called? Don't know. What was the, what's the mascot of the high school? Don't know. What street did you live on? Oh, the one over there. So I, all, every time we say they're from here, there'd be, these questions kind of ring in my mind, like, I'm sure that's the easy box to check, but it's hard to tell without a lot more detail into their background.
And I'll add too, after the Grants Pass ruling in June of last year, there was a big push from, it was nationwide, of enforcing no camping. And so here in our district, what we saw was Bay Area transplants were coming up here. They were being bused, there was news stories about it, they were putting them on a bus in San Francisco and just sending them wherever. We saw people coming from the Central Valley, we saw people coming from not so much Northern California, but certainly Nevada. And so there was a time here where I was asking specifically our hot supervisor, who's also in the room, to, let's ask these people where they're from and how, and how they got here. And a lot of people we saw for the first time, they got here by a city or county-sponsored bus, so.
So that also, that makes it sound like my second question is probably moot, because we've also been told in the past that people sort of stake out a territory and, but if they're all new to the area, or if a lot of them are new to the area, then they obviously wouldn't have a territory of some sort staked out. I mean, it's like people in the Simphidel area don't go to the Bradshaw area, that, that kind of thing.
There's still some of that, for sure. You know, the people that have been here, the chronic, you know, homeless that we have, they have, we know where they're going to be, right? If, if John Doe, we know is homeless, if we go to three places, we're going to find him because he's going to be in one of those three places or walking from one to the other. But someone who's new to the area, no, they, they're just going to go where they think is safe and, and go from there. Thank you, Officer Blair.
I have a question about the badge. Would it be accurate to say that that is the outfit you're wearing day to day and, you know, serving on the hot team?
This is my outfit for the hot team, yes, sir.
It's a shock that people are denying services because that image scares homeless people, in my opinion. I think, you know, how we present ourselves, looking like a cop, you know, don't know if that's helpful and that's just my thing. I'm a psychology major, how you present things, how people perceive things when they see them. And I just wonder if we might want to rethink that, like how we dress, maybe no gun on the hip, maybe look more like you're connecting someone with services rather than getting them in trouble, that sort of thing. That's just my constructive criticism.
If, if I may, you know, Officer Blair isn't operating by himself, he's typically with maybe another police officer, maybe a probation officer, but our navigators are with them as well. So I think everybody kind of takes their turn at the tip of the spear, depending on who, who is being made contact with, if it's the first time or not. I, I get your point, though, and. Okay.
Comment is, are we overwhelming them with too many bodies on our response? Because that's almost worse, in my opinion.
Right, I get it.
I'm not an expert and this is not my field, but just as someone in other fields, it just. Maybe go different, that's all I'm thinking.
Sure. I appreciate the comment.
So I have a question. So because we value all our business owners and we know they're the ones that are taking this in the rear, because a cart does cost 400. the ones that are taking this in the rear, because a cart does cost $400 bucks to get pulled off. And have someone steal it from it is, is sad, because they're, all they're doing is trying to service our community, and they lose carts all the time. I would like to see those numbers, because I would like to see if economic development could get with them to help them out. Because if it's the locks thing, I know how expensive those are, because I've been around grocery stores. And if we have to come and help them, and they're being targeted as, you know, it's one of those things, if you, it's, it's the least resistance. If all of a sudden, we help one of the guys put like a third of those locks on those carts, then they'll stop using those carts, and they'll go to someone else. And it's something we're going to have to chase until we can find someone. Because a lot of the homeless problem, we know, is psychological, and we can't help that, because we don't have facilities that you guys can take them to yet. This is one of those things, that we're, we're getting there slowly, and we're hoping to have that soon. But maybe, maybe off, you could give me the numbers, and we can come up with something, a program. Because we did have one that, back in the day, I don't remember what it was. It was first, we need to go pick up all the carts. And now that we were starting to pick up all the carts, now it's more like, who is getting robbed the most in our community? And how can we help facilitate protecting them? So if it's like, if it's Whole Foods, and they're the ones that are, or one of those guys are having the most trouble, then we need to go around them and help them out, and figure out how we're going to address them losing their carts, or it's the Home Depot, or some, whatever it is, you know what I'm saying? So maybe we can look into that.
We can, I can share the numbers with you.
And, and it is budget season. So I'm not willing to have one of our businesses be robbed on the daily, because he's right, 2,300 is a crazy number to say out loud. That's more than one a day. You start to do that, you're like, so, like, I couldn't even have my business. So every four days, I lose like $1,000. Like, that's nuts. And then, then, you know, and then you got to take it over. It's not like they don't wreck the cart. They wrecked the cart, pulled the wheels off. That, that cart is damaged by the end of it. It's not like you can go refresh it, and then give it to a community, like, you can't reengage the cart after it's been wrecked. But, you know, I don't want them feeling like the only answer is to leave Rancho Cordova. That's never the answer that's acceptable. We double down, we find ways to make stuff safer, we do P bids, we do whatever it takes. So I think it's time, when we start seeing numbers, thank you for getting rid of the trash. As someone that happened to be one of those people that when we used to do the trash days, took down, I took, I think it was six washing and dryers out of someone's house, because they had been stacking it. So I understand how the trash can, can light up, and I understand we pulled, and this is just making our community look amazing. I don't like that number, because that means that someone's robbing us blind, in my mind, and we need to get in front of it. And I don't blame the business owner. I want to come alongside him as a partner. And maybe it's not all the carts, but if we start tagging every third with some of those locking devices for them, that'll do the same effect. And it's just helping them out to be safer in our city. Because that way, you're not coming as the enforcer, like, hey, you really need to come get these. It's more like, listen, we're here to help you. Like, we understand, we see it. So how can we, through economic development or something else, give you a chance to protect these carts so they don't show up? Because either way, we don't want them stealing from our citizens or our businesses. You know what I'm saying? That makes sense? Yeah.
Thank you all.
Any more questions, comments, counsel?
I think there's a few more presentations for the other pieces of this, so I think there's still more to come, so.
She's wrapping it up. And we're done. Next.
So moving on to accountability, accountability and enforcement, I'd like to bring up our community prosecutor. And in addition to the things on here, I think she's going to talk a little bit about our Business Watch and our Hotel Watch that we've created.
Yes. Good evening. For those of you, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting yet. My name is Kristin Schlesel. I'm a deputy district attorney at the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office, and I'm currently assigned to be the community prosecutor here for the city of Rancho Cordova. So thank you for having me. I'll start by just touching on our Business Watch and the Hotel Watch.
Before you do that, we have a brand-new council member here, who also is an amazing lawyer. Can you explain to him really the relationship we set up that's different from other cities, why we have our own district attorney and stuff like that, and how that really helps our city be amazing?
Yeah, so this is
Included the word amazing city in it.
Rancho Cordova is an amazing city, in large part because of the relationship with the district attorney's office. No, truly, though, Rancho Cordova is very lucky, or, I mean, not lucky, because you've elected to have this relationship with the district attorney's office. This isn't something that every city has. And I think that, for a number of reasons that we'll touch on today, the different programs that we offer as part of the community prosecution unit, it really helps the community, especially tackle the unhoused population, this chronic issue that a lot of the cities are seeing. So, and you'll, and I might circle back to this at the end, just because I think, if I explain it now, we'll get through kind of everything I'm about to talk about. But it is really advantageous to the city to have this partnership, because I'm able to handle things that typically our office isn't able to handle, right? The low-level trespassing offenses, the low-level petty thefts, the low-level vandalisms done by a lot of the unhoused community. Unfortunately, our office just doesn't have the bandwidth to prosecute every single one of these cases. But when I see someone who is a chronic reoffender, then I have the ability, I'm aware, I know how to handle that, and I can actually tackle those issues. So I'll touch on that a little at the end, though. But we've started a Business Watch for the Folsom Olsen Zimphandel Corridor. The goal of this Business Watch is, it's in line with, I think, the theme you've heard a lot this evening, and collaboration is key, right? So the goal of the Business Watch is to collaborate with different agencies, to all be together, and to provide resources to these businesses to tackle issues that the businesses are each having. So my office has seen a lot of success with these Business Watches throughout the county. There's a number of them in north, in the north area, as well as the south area. And so I'm really excited to start it here. What we do is, and we had our first meeting, so it's not really typical of what we'll do at every meeting, but we all kind of introduced ourselves. It's myself, it was the pop team covering, or the, actually, the pop deputy who's covering the Folsom Olsen Zimphandel Corridor. So they actually get to meet their, their deputy one-on-one, the pop sergeant. We had code enforcement there, we had, probation was there. And then we also brought along our retail theft attorney from the district attorney's office, because obviously, with the FOS, retail theft is a major issue. So we all introduced ourselves, gave a little bit of information about what we do. And then, what, this is more in line with what every meeting will be, but we go through each business, and we have each business tell us the issues that they're dealing with right now. What are the specific issues that you're dealing with, and how can we help? And so by having all the different agencies present, we can address those needs right there pretty much most of the time, right? If there's an issue that maybe code knows about, or knows how to handle, but I don't, then code enforcement can step up and discuss that, right? So it's really helpful to have that one-on-one direct line of communication with the businesses. We will be starting our first Hotel Watch as well, which I think will also help our unhoused issue, right? Because we have a lot of unhoused individuals who are camping near a lot of the hotels in the area, or who are panhandling in those areas. So that will help tackle that issue there as well. And it's going to be a similar format of having multiple different agencies there and addressing the hotel's specific needs. And help, you know, any, help them with any issues that they've been having. So that's a little bit about the Business Watch and Hotel Watch. The hope is that the Business Watch, as long as it continues to be successful, that we can branch out into other areas, because the goal is to have them for specific areas, so that we're dealing with this specific business areas' needs. Because not all business areas will have the same need. So as for accountability and enforcement, so I think the best way that I think I, as a community prosecutor, really help the, our homeless issue, is through our Chronic Offender Rehabilitation Effort Program. I think this is the bread and butter of what a community prosecutor does, and why it's so helpful for a city to have a community prosecutor. So Rancho Cordova, I'm not sure when it started exactly, but it restarted up again after COVID in June of 2021. And the goal is to identify our problem reoffenders. These are the people where you are shopping at Target, and you see that guy there all the time. You know him. He's like the same unhoused individual who you recognize, right? So those are the types of people that we're targeting. Because oftentimes, we see that a large number of our issues with unhoused individuals comes from a concentrated group, right? So that's our chronic, those are our core people, right? That's what we call them, our core people, our Chronic Offender Rehabilitation Effort candidates, okay? Yes.
I had a question. How was the number 10 chosen?
So, uh, number
That seems kind of high.
So, no.
It has two digits.
No, there's actually rationale behind that.
Seems like it would probably take three pops before, you know.
You'd be surprised. Someone can actually get to 10 pretty quickly, depending, because it's, it's minor things. I mean, now that you've passed the no camping ordinance, each of those misdemeanors counts as one, right? So, I mean, you're camping one day, the next day, and the next day, there's three right there, technically, right? But 10 was chosen because of the Sacramento County's bail schedule. If you have 10 arrests, citations, warrants for a misdemeanor or a felony in Sacramento County, you can be held at $25,000 bail. And so the reason why that is so important is because with how bail works nowadays, it's really difficult to hold someone in custody if they don't have a very serious offense that they're being held for, right? And I'm talking not just serious, but very violent offenses are really what we're seeing people being held for. Someone who's trespassing, I mean, they're not going to, they'll never get held, right? But once they hit 10, then we can keep them in custody. And the reason why it's really important to keep people in custody is because that's the only way that we can get an assessment done. So the way the core program works is, once someone has 10 citations, arrests, warrants, offenses, right, then they can be held on $25,000 bail. I will go to court, I'll make sure that they stay in custody, and that the judge understands kind of the reason why we're asking for them to be held. And then they are assessed for a rehabilitation program. So that goes through the Department of Human Services, they get assessed. Usually, it takes about two weeks. And then they hopefully will have a bed with about, I would say usually it's taking about, at most, a month and a half to get someone into a bed. Oftentimes, they're being placed at River City, which is in Sacramento, which is a rehabilitation program. It's inpatient, though. And that's the key with these chronic offenders, is they're, they're homeless, right? They don't have the means to drive themselves to their, their outpatient treatment program. Oftentimes, they don't have the ability to just mentally be, you know, consistently remember to go there, or, you know, make their way there. So the inpatient program is really essential. So what we do is, once they are eligible for this, this inpatient rehabilitation program, we will give them an offer, and we'll say, look, you can go to a 90-day residential rehab program, or you can go into custody for a certain amount of time. And because of that, we use the rehabilitation and the the time in custody, kind of like as the carrot and the stick, right? We're helping persuade these people to get treatment, because oftentimes, they'd much rather go into an inpatient program. So then the person goes in for 90 days. If they fail the program, if they leave the program, then they go into custody for a set amount of time that we make clear from the outset. So this is a really helpful program. Does everyone succeed at the program? Not always, right? And I think, I think just someone accepting the treatment is really important and key, because oftentimes, people with, you know, unlimited resource, resources take numerous times at rehabilitation before they actually become clean and sober, and are able to get on a better path. So I think that this is a really great alternative to just straight in custody time, to try to help, give these people an opportunity to change the course of their lives. So that is our core program.
So thinking about Joe's question
Yes.
About the 10. What's the possibility that since Prop 36 passed, and that $950 threshold got eliminated, finally, what's the possibility that it should be lowered?
So in
I mean, if you, if you, if you can go into Walmart 10 times, and Steve steal $95 worth of something or other, which we know they do, they walk in, they go out, they jump on the train and go away. Okay. But if you can, if that $950 threshold is gone, then what's the possibility that the, the 10 arrest threshold should be lowered?
So I think the problem is, the bail schedule is what it is. We, I don't have the ability to change the bail schedule, nor does our office, to change the bail schedule, right? So it requires 10 for it to be $25,000 bail. Even someone who, and I haven't had a ton of the post-Prop 36 felony thefts, but my inclination is to believe that even those individuals are probably not going to be held in custody, unfortunately, just because the jails are overcrowded. It really takes a serious violent offense for someone to remain in custody, or someone who has clearly established that they're not going to return and show back up to court, right? So those are the kind of two.
And is probably clearly established.
At least for now. That's not to say that someone who has a felony theft, and who has been a chronic offender in the area, isn't someone that I would take on as, you know, because I will take cases here and there that don't qualify for the core program, if it's someone who is a chronic issue in the city of Rancho Cordova. So that's not to say that I wouldn't take that person on. It's just that they wouldn't be eligible for the core program necessarily. And we would have to work something else out. So, and then the second aspect that we deal with as, in terms of the unhoused population, is our, is private property enforcement. So that's our nuisance abatement effort. That's where we, and this deals with the unhoused population typically more so where there is a vacant lot, or maybe a house that is, no one's living at, and you have unhoused individuals squatting there, or camping on the property, right? Where we would then have the ability, if it's, because everyone in the community has the right to the quiet enjoyment of their property. And so at that point, if it's violating that, if someone isn't able to do that, then we can potentially enact a nuisance lawsuit against the property owner. So that's another route that we can, or another tool that we can use to tackle this issue, if you have irresponsible property owners who are letting unhoused individuals camp and reside on their property.
Thank you. And I think, just on your point, Councilmember Budge, the goal of the core program isn't punishment, it's to get these people into treatment, and then be successful at treatment. And so I think it was nice that, you know, they, they put it at 10. It would be great if it was lower, because when we contact these people, we sort of see the writing on the wall. We know they're going to get to 10. But I think 10 demonstrates, hey, this person is continuing down this path. Despite the three E's of homeless enforcement, you know, we're educating each time they continue doing this. But the ultimate goal there is not any sort of punishment or fines, it's really to get them into treatment, and then, then they be successful and transition into some long-term housing, so.
I also suspect it's possible that Joe doesn't know what SEPTAD assistance is.
So it's crime prevention through environmental design. So our code team, our crime prevention specialist at the police department, they're SEPTAD certified, so they can go and do, do you know, am I preaching to the choir? Yeah. And so they So basically, they go and they assess a property, and they talk about areas that could use improved lighting, trim back trees, better security doors, what have you. And they author a report, and it could be something as small as one person's house, and we do it all the way up to apartment complexes or businesses.
The service we provide to a lot of our commercial property, they're usually the targets of this stuff. But we also, you know, we, we want them to work with us, but then through the code enforcement process, we can hold them accountable.
They also look at subdivisions to make sure that people's front doors are visible from the street, and, and that kind of really basic thing that helps.
So moving on, we're going to talk about our outreach services and have our outreach navigator, Rob Brown, come up, and our code enforcement officer, who does most of our homeless outreach team coordination, Heather Cook, speak to this slide.
Hello. I'm Heather Cook. I am the homeless outreach coordinator and code enforcement officer here with the city of Rancho Cordova. As Deputy Blair kind of went through a day of a life of what we do, day in and day out, there's a lot that goes behind that list of how we come up with what we're doing and how we're doing. We actually start our week off every Monday morning with all of our partners in the community, from Parks and Rec, SAC Metro Fire, not only sitting at the police department, the regional transit team. We kind of have a lot of hands in a lot of different pots. Everybody gets together, and we do a roundtable. Not only are we going over the complaints that we've seen over the weekend, or or any of the other issues that have arise, we all sit down and throw at each other, what, what are we seeing in our area? What is Parks and Rec seeing in the parks, whether it's just graffiti, gang graffiti, or is it homeless encampments that have arose? Um, same with the railroad tracks and anywhere from Hazel to Bradshaw. Um, as we're doing that meeting, we are figuring out what our hotspots are, how we're going to tackle those spots for the week and tie in our services. Our navigators are posted in several places throughout the week, um, not only in-house with us and in the field with us, but we also have them out in the field so that the community can contact them directly standalone should they not want to get services with us or there's follow-up needed. There are times when we're out in the field and individuals just can't get to CityNet for whatever their reasons are. We can utilize the, um, police department to help transport these individuals and drop them exactly where CityNet is so that these people can get services. We are at the food locker once a week right now, um, so that the individuals know that they can go not only get their food services and if their food insecure, they can then get all their services with CityNet. So, the way that we incorporate our services is a little bit unique, because not only do they ride with us and go out and meet these people, um, as Tamayo also mentioned, the SEPTED aspect of it. So, when we are out there, there's a lot of moving parts in one interaction. It's not just meeting this person, trying to offer them resources, but it is on the backend, one of us talking to a business owner and asking them, "What are you seeing? What are your issues? How can we assist? Let's give you that SEPTED evaluation right here, right now. I can see three different things on this property that are attracting these individuals, let's see if we can correct some of these." So, not only is it, you know, the police department doing anything on their part that may need to be education-wise, maybe criminally citing if needed, CityNet's not only talking to the individual who's in crisis and in need, but we're on the backend as well with the business owner, trying to educate them as to how we can help, what can we do? How, what do you need from us? Um, with that then comes all of our navigation services and all of the lovely housing opportunities that they offer.
Good evening, y'all. So, my name is Rob Brown, like Officer Cook was saying, um, my job is when we encounter our unhoused, um, a lot of these folks, they are having, uh, a lot of mental health challenges, a lot of medical challenges, a lot of these folks haven't had basic necessity for years. And they're not expecting there to be options for them available. So, that could be anything from just getting them an ID with the DMV. A lot of them with, they, they have severe, uh, they have severe, um, medical issues. Uh, getting them reconnected with, uh, Medi-Cal benefits and just letting them know what their options are there. Um, other documentations like social security cards, just, you know, basic, you know, necessity documentations that a lot of these folks don't realize that are available. Um, or getting them connected with, um, transitional housing, uh, around the county, working in cooperation with other agencies and, uh, partners within the county. Um, or sometimes they just, they are done here and they don't want to be in Rancho Cordova anymore. Okay, well, we have options for that as well. Do you have family somewhere else that you would feel more comfortable? So, then I would get the information, we would get the information. Um, if we get a contact person from them, then we would be able to move forward just so we would know that there is a sustainable, uh, healthy option from point A to point B, from where they would like to go. Um, like, uh, Code Officer Cook was saying, uh, we do, um, every Monday, we are out, um, with, uh, the hot team. Um, every Tuesday, we have a, um, a pop-up location, um, which is right off of Folsom Boulevard. Uh, Wednesday, we're at the Rancho Cordova Food Locker, uh, providing a lot of these same, uh, resources. Um, you know, we are just, uh, what we do is just provide that bridge and communication with them, because a lot of these folks, yeah, they, they are, you know, they are dealing with, uh, challenges and a lot of them have, you know, a lot of PTSDs and a lot of, you know, adult childhood experiences and things like that that they've been dealing with, and it's been years since they've been offered any kind of options and they're just used to, you know, people shutting the door on them. So, that's where we come in and just let them know that they do have options and then figure out what the best game plan is, um, as far as for housing, benefits, um, and just basic necessities and things like that. Yeah, as far as, um, as you can see, the numbers here, um, you know, we do, uh, we do offer, uh, a lot of these, and I was just talking with Officer Cook about this, uh, I would say about 80% of the folks that we do encounter, um, as far as from my experience in over a year, um, here in Rancho Cordova, uh, they do have, um, long-term ties with Rancho Cordova. Um, and so, that's where we're, you know, we're just trying to figure out, okay, what can we, what can we do from there? Uh, we do, uh, we do work in cooperation as far as with the food services. We, we have, uh, hygiene kits that we walk, you know, we do have in our disposal, we have snacks, but then there's also the food locker that we could connect them with, that they're als- we're also there as well. Um, and a lot of the, the case management services, that is a lot of, uh, things on the benefit side and the transitional housing side. Uh, we do, uh, connect with our, uh, county, uh, 2-on-1 partners and, uh, there's veteran services that we also have connections with as well. Uh, we do encounter a good handful of veterans in this area that, um, are, you know, looking for those services. So, um, and then it could be just something, they're just looking to, uh, they have appointments somewhere for, uh, critical need medically and I have no way to get there. So, we'll provide them with, um, transportation, like a bus pass for that. So, um, another thing that we do facilitate as well, and this is with Rancho Cordova Heart, is, uh, we provide rental assistance. And these are folks that are getting three-day notice to evict and they are about to experience homelessness. So, that's where we come in and we get the necessary documentation, um, from them and as well as their, uh, their residents. And we try to put a stop to that as far as providing the resources, um, in cooperation with Rancho Cordova Heart. Um, so they don't become, uh, homeless at all. Uh, and that is, I know this year, um, I, we've processed almost $30,000 worth that we've, uh, provided for this, that has, um, you know, saved a lot of folks from experiencing homelessness as well. So, that we would be seeing out in the community had this resource not been available to them. And that's just another option, um, that we provide as well.
Good question. On the previous slide, you had 300 individuals served in 16 that moved to housing. Wha- what's the biggest gate that hurdle that you're facing to get these individuals from the unhoused to housing?
Um, I think there is a lot, I mean, I don't know, what would, there's probably a lot of, um, that-
There's a few different issues. One, resistance is probably number one.
Resistance from the unhoused themselves.
Correct.
They do not want to be housed.
Right.
They do not want to change their ways. A lot of housing comes with some sort of rules most of the time.
Mm-hmm.
Getting an individual to want to agree to those rules, even if they are very low barrier, is probably one of our largest hurdles, is people just would prefer to live the lifestyle that they are than get into housing. They may come for a hygiene kit, they may come for food, they may come just to say, "Hi, it's nice to see you, we like seeing you." No, I don't want a roof today.
Right. You know, a lot of these are AOD clients as well, alcohol or drugs, you know, which is something, you know, that, you know, we're very conscious of. We just like to know, we just like to be able to, you know, be that bridge in communication with them just so we can communicate further with them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so they would be open to resources and, um, and any housing as well. So, you know, with it, with one of our partners or, uh, other transitional, uh, housing programs. So, whether it be with, uh, our agency, CityNet, or with another one of our, um, county, um, agencies like Insight Housing or with, um, you know, any of the other, kind of a matr shelter or anything like that, you know? But there are options, you know, we just like to be that bridge for them to realize that, yes, there is options.
I don't want this to sound like too aggressive or a downer of a comment, but I added up the numbers. We had 25 people to housing in a year.
Yeah, that would be, um, that number, I think, uh, that includes, uh, the transitional shelters so that we do connect them with as well. Um, and so, yeah, that is, uh, including those.
And we don't have a, we don't have a measure, this is getting back to your previous point, we don't have a measure past a reference maybe about how many of those actually stayed in it.
Uh, there is a, um, we use, we utilize what's called the HMIS system, the Homeless Management Information System, and, uh, that is the metrics that you're talking about, that's county-wide. Um, and it shows the, you know, start to finish and as far as, you know, how long they've been in the program for.
So, if we looked at our 25 a month later, six months later, a year later?
Yeah.
You know, I wonder what that number would be?
A lot of these folks, um, I know through our transitional housing program, um, I believe it is 168.5 days is the average stay in it. So, um, yeah, that's about average, which is roughly six months.
I think the hardest thing for people to get their heads around in the public, people haven't looked at this in any detail, is related to the very first comment you made when you stood there and you said, "A huge percentage of the people we deal with have mental health struggles, addiction, disease, uh, past history, whatever it may be." You, you said it extremely well.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, you know, based on my perceptions over 20 years with this issue and this job,
Yeah.
there's a whole bunch of people in our community who think homeless people they see on the street is identical to me except they had bad luck and lost a job.
Right.
And the person they regularly see on the street is not, in general, that person, because that person has enough skills to try to figure out, "How do I not-"
Right.
"-live on the street?" There's something else has happened-
Mm-hmm.
"-to the people we see on the street." And I think there's this real dichotomy in how people think about it. If you're kind of a law and order person-
Right.
-you look at that person, just think, "So much disorder, so much mess, so much chaos, so much crime."
Right.
You know, it's a terrible pestilence. And on the flip side of that, people think, "Oh, what a terrible tragedy that someone like me can end up there." Right, and there's sort of this mental health thing that's just kind of like missed in that.
Yeah, and I think that's probably the biggest, um, the biggest thing that we are conscious of when we're out, uh, out and about. Um, and I've been doing, uh, outreach and navigation and case management, uh, for about 17 years now between city of Rancho Cordova and downtown Sacramento. So, um, you know, there, yeah, that's something that I'm very, uh, keen to pick up on in as far as the communication aspect with, uh, these folks.
The law and order side has a hard time looking at that, because they think, you know, it's easy to say, "Those people are responsible for that thing they're doing, being homeless." The other side doesn't want to acknowledge it's a mental health thing, because then they feel somehow those people will be blamed for it instead of someone doing something about it or feeling sorry for them. And so, like, I'm always puzzled, the advocates really won't talk about that mental health number.
Yeah, and a lot of these folks, you know, they don't want to be felt sorry for, but they, you know, they're, the challenges that they've faced, you know, the last five, 10, 15, 20, some of them 30 years. You know, they haven't been able to realize the options they have with, even with these, you know, critical barriers, you know, so.
The public often pressures us to say, "Oh, can't you just make more affordable housing available?" Or, "Can't you do beds somewhere?" And with a, with a chronic group, that's not that simple, right? Because you've got, I don't know what, what percent, I think I've heard numbers as high as 90% would fall into some kind of a mental health category.
Yeah.
And that they're typically overwhelmingly service-resistant.
Yeah.
Right, like, uh, you may have to have 20 contacts before you have like a successful contact or, you know, something like that.
Yeah.
If, if ever. So, I think the, like, the simplistic solutions that get thrown out there, create a campground, turn a motel into it, you know, give them free housing, it's, it's not actually hitting the mark of, of the people we see all the time.
A lot of the times, they just want a voice to communicate with. Um, and sometimes it's basic as that. So, it's just realizing that, yeah, this, these individuals, this individual, yeah, they're dealing with a lot of stuff in their life and what best communicates with them as individuals, you know?
Councilmember, I guess I would respectfully say that some of those folks, or many of those folks who have that response that you do, have actually never interacted with a person in a serious mental health crisis.
Mm-hmm, right, right.
So, they don't know-
They just don't have enough context or information about it, right?
But interacting with an unhoused person in a mental health crisis is like, because it's a very, it's a very different set of skills, it's a very different type of interaction.
And the, the, the direct effect for us as city leaders is our residents expect us to do something about this. If the chronic offenders are the majority, majority of our problem in the space, we are phenomenally ill-suited to deal with the mental health aspect of this. You know, the state used to handle this in the, in the 50s and 60s and then we had like the Community Mental Health Act in 1963, I think signed by JFK, that basically cut off funding to states for mental health, um, beds. And so, we went from having one bed for 400 people in California in a mental health hospital to now I think the ratio's like 5,000 people to one bed.
There was about, I remem- there was, I don't know if you're familiar with the, uh, LPS Act?
Yeah.
It was in like 67.
Right.
Um, where there was about 150,000, um, clients being, um, you know, they were, they were functioning within state facilities. You know, they were being provided, um, you know, proper medication, um, somewhat mental health even for the time. But what the LPS Act did, when they got, you know, they, that pretty much cut off everything and shut down all the state-run facilities, all the hospitals.
Yeah, federal funding was removed, they were granted civil rights that said they couldn't be held against their will, regardless of their capacity to make a logical decision about it.
Yep.
And so, that population transitioned to prison.
Mm-hmm.
Then our prisons got overcrowded, so now they're on our streets.
Yeah.
And now, ironically, coming full circle, we're trying to build a whole bunch of state hospital mental health beds again, right?
Yeah.
But in the meantime, we went back to the 19th century when we kept people with mental illness in prison.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Thank you for noting that, Councilman Sanders.
I'm glad you brought that up.
I, I would say, you know, it was, it was kind of probably well-intentioned, the de-institutionalization movement at the time, because drugs like Thorazine had come out in the 1950s.
Right.
Thorazine can cure 80% of psychotic mental illness, which is a subset of overall mental illness. It's really effective, and so psychiatrists, American Psychiatric Association said, "We don't need these awful mental state hospitals anymore, we're going to come up with drugs to cure everything." And unfortunately, we haven't come up with any since the 1950s that work on a mechanism other than the one they figured out then, like dopamine response stuff. So, uh, we made a long-term change of national policy based on way too small of a data sample. And we're still, I mean, how many years later now, since 1963, paying the price?
For sure.
I have a question. If I wanted to go to a shelter tonight, could I?
There are, um-
And would you even recommend I go to a shelter tonight?
Well, as far as locally, in the Rancho Cordova area, um, there is one that offers a 23-hour shelter. Um, it's the, uh, the Back Shelter, which is right over, um, by the Butterfield area. So, we do, uh, connect folks with that that need immediate shelter, um, as far as, and they do, they also partner and they offer, um, you know, counseling resources and, you know, other, like, mental health and, you know, just some other job trainings as well. Like, uh, one of, uh, one of the individuals I was working with, she even, you know, got computer, you know, typing, she passed a typing class, they offer classes too, so, you know, job skills and stuff like that. skills and stuff like that, you know, so these are, I know the Folsom Cordova Partnership also, you know, we, we definitely, you know, are contacting them as well, you know, because they have a lot of resources as far as, you know, daytime, you know, resources.
So I could go to a shelter if I was like first round draft pick homeless person, ready to accept services, ready to do a keyboarding class? What if I wasn't?
That would be something that we would probably have more, we would have a few encounters with that and we would offer that. We would let them know, hey, you know, we're going to come up with, I want to meet with you again. You know, where are you going to be? Here's where we're going to be. Can you meet us here? Cool. You need transportation? Okay, we'll get you, you know, we'll give you a bus pass, you can come down and meet us here at one of our locations and we can continue this conversation.
Garrett has one small comment I'll make for him. When he figured out that no one in the county is keeping track of how many open beds there are on a given night. And you thought about trying to like do an app or something to do that.
So I will tell Joe my favorite.
He kind of got shown the hand.
Well, I'll still do my favorite story and is.
I've already heard the story, but tell everyone.
I'll tell it for all my community. So at, at one time, I was like, hey, because they kept on saying, we need more beds, more beds, more beds, more beds, more beds. That's the thing that's going to fix it. And I was like, and I serve in a lot of Catholic soup kitchens and I go down and serve with the homeless. So I'm used to this community and how widely the, it's a psychological thing and stuff like that. So, but they said there was beds. And, and then I was worried because a lot of homeless freeze to death, right? And I was like, okay, we can get these people off the street. All I have to do is have my cops be able to tell them what bed is open. And so I went and met with the people at the county that run this, this terrible technology based in DOS that my man over there introduced me to.
It's nineteen nineties tech.
It's, it's amazing. It was, it's a blue screen and they're like, Garrett, you just click here and, and I, and I run a tech company and I was like, I know California doesn't have a DOS based prompt system. And I was like, because I know what RIMs is, I know what CLTS is, these are systems that cops use to be able to look at people's records. And it's very easy to put a button that'd be like, okay, I pulled up so and so. All right, do you need a bed? And all beds have different, like some beds are only for women, some beds are for families. And if you get instantaneously just pull it up and they're like, well, what kind of system would that be? And I was like, I don't know, hotels.com, you can go download the, the, the application today and set it up. It takes about, I don't know, like six days and you could have this program set up. And everyone that runs a bed could put in what beds are open or are closed. And they're like, yeah, but then we'd have to get people to, I don't know, do their job that you pay them for? And it was crazy to me because I walked into places where they said it was full and there was like three people and like twenty four beds open. And I was like, what are you waiting for? Well, we have these beds open in case someone shows. And I was like, but what? And, and it just broke my heart because I'm like, so we have beds. So our problem isn't that we have beds. Our problem is we can't tell the people that need the beds that the beds are open. And they're like, yeah. And I was like, well, fix it. This isn't brain science. This is rocket science. This is some, you know what I'm saying? This is something we can figure out. And I was just like, and it's funny that no one wants to take those steps to do simple stuff to really fix things. Because if you could go to our cops and our cops could instantly pull over a homeless person, go to the thing like, look, you can't camp on the street here, but I have a bed for you. It's on fifty sixth street, someone's coming by to pick you up and take you there, right? They're not going to fight it, like zero entry, you don't have to, you know, be off the drugs and stuff like that, but you can go sleep there tonight. Because that's the first step. Let's, like, a lot of people think you can just throw them in a home. They will wreck those homes in six months, guaranteed. Every time they try this, they're not mentally stable enough to be there. But in a shelter where they can go back out and we can start the work in the process, there's a chance. But I, I really feel like everyone keeps banging their head doing the, the same old, same old, instead of just looking at the whole thing, like, look, we just need to stop this. We need to stop this madness and be like, we should be able to, like, within six months, connect all the shelters that are paid by the county and supported by the county and say, you must put your data in here. And when someone comes in, because they have a file, you click it and beep, and now you know where everybody is. So that way, if you guys are looking to get a hold of, because what, what a lot of people don't know is the best way to get a lot of people out of homelessness is to reconnect them with their families and have their families engage who love them even more than the government and have them take back over. So if you have a person that's trying to find their lost uncle who fell off his meds and now we reengage, we found out where he is, and the shelter could say, well, he's on thirteenth street, go help him, then we can tell them, go to thirteenth street and find your uncle and start the process again. Right now, we can't even track where the people are to be able to deliver help, to be able to help them. And, and this is, and it's the, the most outrageous decision is this technology is already here. It's old. This is old stuff. Not as old as DOS. Bless it, bless its soul, bless its, bless its soul, bless its soul. But it's like that kind of technology. Like, we should be able to set up websites that intertwine with these systems. And there's not even rules against it. And so I did take a whack at it and I did run it, which is funny. And I ran into administration that stopped me and said, oh, there's no way. And it was funny because our DA, T and Ho really tried to step up and help push in and then ran against administration that wouldn't let him make simple changes to be able to do. Because it's, like, we can say all we want, but when you can't pull numbers out, like, I can't tell them, like, I think our beds are like at fifty percent full. This is crazy. Fifty percent of these beds that could have people in it that need it could have these beds full. Like, you know, and, and it just, it puts such a burden on us because like, create more beds. But why? How would we know if we need them? Now, if all of a sudden eighty percent of the beds are full, yeah, we need more beds. Then there's other problems we're probably running into. But if you can't prove to me that, how can we do this? And so I'm just proud that our city stands up and tries to help out vets and does what you guys are doing. I know a lot of cities aren't trying to take these steps in the right direction. I'm just hoping my county supervisors and the DA can get together and kind of take that step. So I get off this stupid soapbox and just feeling like we're, we keep doing the same dang thing over and over and over again. And yeah, that was my rant for the day. I apologize. Thanks for firing me up, David. I appreciate it. I was trying to.
Good job. Happy Monday.
So we have about six more slides left. We're just gonna get to the housing slide and Stefan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the city. Just to kind of tag along to this conversation, but to give you a little bit more of the context on the housing picture of how we relate to our homelessness efforts. So one of our current projects, as you know, is the Mather Veterans Village Phase Four, which is a continuation of the Mather Veterans Villages Phases One through Three. So this is going to be an additional seventy residential units, permanent supportive housing for homeless and disabled veterans with a focus on senior veterans. And we have, as you may know, we just submitted our application for the Home Key Plus program. And that with, if, if we're successful, which we have pretty strong confidence that we're going to be successful, we will be starting construction in early twenty twenty six. And then just to give you kind of a little bit more context on our affordable housing or low income housing projects, the Sunrise Crossing project, which we funded in twenty two, twenty twenty three, is now, or twenty twenty two, rather, is now completed and is fully occupied. That is a project that is right on Folsom Boulevard near the Sunrise Libra Station. And then coming up, we've got a few more projects as well, one being the Mill Station Affordable Housing Project, as you know, is part of the Mills Crossing Project. We're aiming for sixty residential units with an opportunity to add some small number of artist designated units within this project. And we'll be looking to apply for funding this year, twenty twenty five, which would give us the ability to start construction as soon as early twenty twenty seven. I know that's a long time to wait, but we have to catch these funding cycles as the, we kind of have to surf the waves when the waves are going.
Are they veteran artists?
I'm sorry?
Are they veteran artists? These artist designated spaces?
No, so for the Mill Station, we're, well, we, we could look at veteran artists, but I think we're sort of just opening the conversation to designate them for artist units.
Like low income artists?
Low income artists, yeah. And then several other upcoming affordable housing projects, one being the Crossings at Woodbury, which is sort of an ongoing perennial project, but we are still trying to get that one done. The Mather Veterans Village Phase Five, which you can see here the conceptual site plan on this screen, would be another seventy units for home, for, for veterans, maybe not necessarily homeless, but we're still working on that. We're getting site acquisition or site control on that project. And then we have several other opportunities. We've got a seven acre parcel out at the ranch specific plan area, and then a future potentially one hundred percent affordable artist housing. And then we're always looking for additional opportunities, sites and opportunities as well.
That concludes our presentation. I know that was a, a little bit lengthy and I, there was a good exchange here of information. We appreciate your time and certainly are here for any more questions or discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Stefan. We will move on to Agenda Item twelve point three. You had a comment.
Public comment first.
Sorry, yes. Good point. We will start with council member and then move on to public comment.
Just a couple of comments, you know, don't apologize for the length of that sort of report, because this is, I don't know, colleagues, the number one thing we hear about from residents, probably. I mean, it certainly ranks up there and being incredibly impactful for people's daily lives. I can say also, it markedly contributed to my worst, I think probably my worst day as, as mayor of Ranch Cordova, certainly in the first decade of our existence. When I was standing in front of a community room of people down in Sunrise Douglas at the brand new elementary school, and they were asking me, you know, why don't we have a grocery store down here? We have to drive all the way to Folsom to go to a grocery store. And I pointed out that we had a brand new Target Center at Zenfandel and Folsom. I mean, at the time, probably one of the nicest Target grocery stores you'd find anywhere. They redid the whole parking lot, the whole center looked great. And someone in the room said, oh, we'd never go there. I might go there, I'd never allow my wife to go there. Well, why is that? Well, it's just too dangerous. Well, why is it too dangerous? And when I boiled that down, it was all about homeless. It's about the homeless being there, therefore I could not possibly consider going there because the homeless are there. That was when I really saw the impact of it. And I asked the room, how many people shop at Target? And the answer was none. So here we are, building a new part of Ranch Cordova, thinking, oh, it's going to be great, good, great things for business in the old part of Ranch Cordova. And because of homeless situation, people wouldn't touch it. That was a bad day. But that does sort of show you the impact of this, right? I mean, it is huge on our resident, and it's on our residents, and it's huge on our budget. So I don't know, Chief, if you have, I'm going to quiz you here a little bit here, but, you know, I think our previous police chief estimated that something like twenty five percent or thirty percent of our calls were homeless related to the PD. I don't know, what do you think of that number?
I think probably then, absolutely. Now it'd be a little bit lower. I would say, you know, you look at those calls per day, eight hundred and fifty calls per day on a Friday, we get anywhere from, and not every call's dispatch, so I would, I would have to throw in that caveat. A lot of times people call for perceived crime and it's not, but through our communication center, we probably get twenty five hundred calls a day. Certainly we go to the homeless transient calls. So, you know, you'd have to go from there. So maybe it is twenty five percent, you know, with those numbers. So, and that goes anything from petty theft and you get there and you find that a homeless person's involved to someone reporting a homeless person. So, you know, we get a lot of calls for people walking in the roadway and they say they're homeless. And a lot of times we get there, they may be homeless, but also it's just a guy walking in a roadway. He's not homeless. He just doesn't want to go down to the crosswalk. So we'd have to weed those out, but, you know, it, it does soak up a significant amount of resources. And you see, you know, I think there's a difference during the daytime, especially when our hot team's on versus the weekends when they're not there. The visibility of our homeless population changes a little bit because they know when our hot team's working. They know when Officer Blair or Officer Booth or Officer Gonzalez, they know when they're on the street, they know when they work, they're, they're observant. And so it does, you know, to your point, it, it makes an area feel safe or less safe depending on who's present and hanging out in that area.
Yeah, it's all about disorder. So people often say we don't do enough, you know, as a city with regard to the homeless. And I, you know, the dollar figure I feel pretty comfortable talking about is like, we probably spend ten million a year on homeless issues, you know, between the police budget or the hot team or code enforcement or trying to provide affordable housing or, you know, shelter, the various programs we have partnerships with, you know, all the efforts we make around homelessness, that's probably a ten million dollar a year expense for us. And we're, you know, we're just one city of eighty five thousand people. That is a massive impact to our overall budget. So there are efforts we've made, you know, like in the FAS, I think this is probably my last question, in the FAS, to try to create a safer space, a place that feels cleaner and neater and doesn't have panhandlers and a lot of homeless activity in it. Do you think we've been successful in the FAS? Or are we, do we not have enough resource to actually make that work? The FAS is Folsom, Olson, Zenfandel. So this is Target and the surrounding sort of stores in that whole, in that whole zone.
Yeah, I think we have, you know, and with our community prosecutor starting the Business Watch, and I think a really great program was getting our letters of agency, specifically getting them extended to one year at a time, rather than we had to go every thirty days and get them resigned before. That gives us the ability, instead of, you know, arriving because a store owner or, not a store owner, an employee or a patron says, hey, there's a homeless guy out front acting weird and I don't know what they're doing. We get there and before it was, hey, what's going on? Can we offer you some services? No. And then that was it. We couldn't get a hold of the owner of the business or the manager or somebody responsible willing to sign a trespass notice. And then, you know, we would say sent on way. Hey, you can't be here. They don't want you here. But we really didn't have any teeth to that. Now with the letters of agency, we can sign, we can act as an agent for the business, give them that trespass notice, and then keep in mind that trespass notice counts towards the core program. So it allows us, these tools allow us to address it a little bit longer term. So I think, yes, over the last four years, it's certainly improved. And I think if you ask the business owners in that area, they'd be able to tell you because they're there every day. But, you know, it's, it's, I think we're taking steps to make it better because it's not perfect yet, and that's, that's the goal. And so with recent investments in technology, with a dedicated Folsom, Olson, Zenfandel officer to not only manage the theft going on in the area from the stores, we saw Prop thirty six, Councilmember Bud, you mentioned that, we've used that to great success now. And people are pretty surprised because they don't watch the news, but they continue to steal. And next thing you know, they're in jail for a felony and they don't know where that came from. And so we do a little education there as well. But between that, between the dedicated FAS officer, the technology that we're using now, I think it will continue to get better. And then, of course, the partnerships with everybody else.
I have great hopes for the technology and being able to sort of alert us when things are happening like the, you know, the panhandler who's standing on the six inch median in the middle of the street, stepping out into traffic constantly to gather, you know, donations or whatever.
Yeah.
I think that, that's just an example of something that anybody driving by thinks, disorder, danger, I'm at risk, I don't feel comfortable here. That's sort of the natural human psychological response to that.
Yeah, and we all feel it. I feel it, you know, if I pull up to a, a street light in my personal car or even my work car, what's this person going to do? Are they going to knock on my window for money? Or are they going to stand there? They might be friendly, they might not, you don't know. And even if they're not homeless, if a person was just standing there, it would make you feel uneasy. But somebody disheveled or there with a dog, it, it certainly escalates those feelings.
It'd be neat if our systems could sort of detect when that happened, rather than having to rely on people calling, because that's obviously an imperfect system.
Yeah.
Black people don't know what to do about it.
And there is technology starting to be developed with our artificial intelligence software that overlays existing camera systems. There's a couple cities exploring, maybe not directly related to homelessness, but crime in general or disorder or sudden movements that would indicate a fight or disturbances happening. I, I haven't seen any of the long term effects of that or how successful those systems are, but there's a lot of technology companies entering that, that area.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Any public comment?
Yes. Larry Lad. Larry, you'll have up to three minutes.
Thank you very much. First, on the subject of homelessness, I'd like to point out the presence of my wife, Deborah Burrell, in the Kiwanis shirt there, who's had vast experience helping the homeless in the church realm with, before the pandemic, with rotating amongst churches, this is with homeless with kids, but with Ranch Cordova Heart as well. And she has way more experience with more individuals than I do. But while she's more like, my daughter's, one of her best roles was a major barber in the Salvation Army. So she modeled after her mother on that. She has to act like a crazy person, she'll act like dad. And my dad was a psychologist, and partly because mental illness runs in the family. And so the irony of, you're talking about families, Garrett. My dad was the head of a counseling testing center, and I was fifteen years old and have, would have to intervene when my little brother would pick up a butcher knife and go after my sisters and, and talk him down and be prepared to hit him over the head with whatever's there in the kitchen in case he didn't do that. So. So, um, one of the points I wanted to make, so I've been at both ends. And I understand, people understand that before homeless, I was one of the guys, when I got out of the Navy, that was in the white coats that would take you away to the funny farm. While Deborah was getting her MBA, I was working with a company that had a contract for Cook County General. And so our bread and butter was if somebody got unruly in the ER, helping security tie them down in leathers and take them struggling and screaming out to Joliet Hospital where there would be six burly guys that would, uh, do their very best to intimidate the new intake. So like when Ross Perot was talking about crazy ants in locked-in closets, some people going like, what? Other people going like knowing exactly what he's talking about. So it's better probably for that crazy ant to be pushing the shopping cart down, uh, Coloma Road than it is to be locked in a closet. So, um, on, on the topic of Ranch Cordova's homeless coming from, uh, being, being raised in Ranch Cordova, there's certainly an element of that. So, so like Garrett, you once told me when we had all these folks camping out during the pandemic, that it would only take one murder to get a response from society on that. And yeah, the murder happened and the guy who was charged with it, I was his yard duty at Peter J. Shields Elementary. You talked Rod Borba about the homeless guy that he lets sleep in the dugouts. So there's a lot, I mean, guys, but it's different though. Deborah sees the people more that come and go. I see the people I walk, walking to the grocery store all the time. The guy I buy the chocolate milk for remembering the Snickers commercial, you know, as long as he's fed and happy, he won't get irate. So, so it, there is an element there.
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay.
Please wrap up your comments.
And, uh, you can't lock ants in closets.
That's all the public comment we have.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Dean. We will move on to Agenda Item 12.3. I'll have the city clerk to announce the subject.
City Council Strategic Framework and Citywide Goals.
Have the city manager give the staff report.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Bye, everybody.
Here's the, thank you, everybody for.
We'll be here.
The conversation. Really want to thank you for this conversation today. Really, I kind of want to provide an update on our strategic framework and, and get Council blessing on, on where, uh, this conversation has took us. And in January, Council held a strategic session to reflect on the progress, align around a shared vision and establish priorities. The goal was to create a strategic framework to guide the city decision-making and resource alignment over the next few years. The report, uh, that was taken from the meeting was attached to the, to the staff report. Really, I want to thank the Council for spending a whole day over at the, uh, at the Police Department, um, for this conversation and for this session. And, um, you can put that back up on the screen if it went away for a minute.
There's, there's a rocket on that report.
Well, you know, I was hoping maybe somebody would notice that, but there is a rocket on the report, given the current conversations. But, um, really, I think, uh, more like kind of one of important parts is we confirmed the conversation in 2023 of the Council values. We also confirmed the conversation, uh, around how we will approach doing business from a city-wide perspective and, and not necessarily focused on, uh, on districts. But then also, uh, kind of where we took from there is really talking about the strategic plan and strategic framework moving forward. And so, um, as you see on, on the screen, we had some good conversations around, uh, the city, our vision, uh, and then talked about some council priorities and, and goal setting. And so, uh, I think I will just briefly, because, uh, you know, want to just hear it, is read the, the strategic vision. The vision, a unified and innovative city that, uh, with a can-do approach, where quality services, infrastructure and technology together with engaged residents, businesses and partners create an outstanding quality of life. And so, um, that was really the vision that came together from a good conversation that we had with, with all of you. We also talked about some council priorities and, and kind of the strategic focus areas around growing strong neighborhoods, make it safe, vibrant, connected communities, build robust infrastructure, that's sustainable systems that support growth and resilience, lead community growth and innovation, so strategic economic development to, for a future-ready, uh, city. Create vibrant community cultural places, arts, culture and public places that foster engagement and promote organizational excellence. So responsive, innovative and high-performing city government. Really, the implementation of, of these goals will help us deliver metrics. And so we have included some metrics as part of this presentation, um, in the packet. But also we'll continue to build on, on those metrics and, and key performance indicators as we move forward and evaluate the success of, of the initiatives and our programming that we move forward. And so, uh, in closing, uh, really what I would just ask is, as we talked about at the end of the strategic planning session, is to bring this back for adoption. And by motion to, uh, approve this as the strategic framework for the city, uh, over the next few years and our new citywide goals that will be used to align our resources, our commitments and our different efforts moving forward.
So I will move that we adopt the strategic framework. Before we go there, Councilmember, I have a question, sorry, on, um, sorry, I'm not sorry.
I'll second the motion just to keep it alive.
Thank you. Yeah. I was looking at the draft metrics and, um, the draft metrics, especially in, in terms of smart and sustainable city. The key goal is what are we doing innovative for our city? It does not have that as a metric in, under innovation. The innovation is not just internal, it is from a city perspective. So I'd like to ensure that you add that as a metric. Want to make, the goal is in five years, we are a smart, sustainable city with, I think we had arts in there. And that should be a metric that I would like to keep seeing.
So I'm, I'm hearing, um, some additional metric around smart and sustainable for innovation and.
Yeah, yes.
We can, we can come up with something for that, Dad.